The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, thank you, everybody. As always, in every meeting at the formal meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, we have rules of decorum, which we always expect everyone to honor and observe, especially to respect each other's First Amendment rights when people are speaking at the podium. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Supervisor Stewart.
Here.
Supervisor Profi McGee.
Here.
Supervisor Lesko.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Galvin.
Here. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome a special guest today, Mr. Ron Johnson from the Arizona Catholic Conference, who's going to lead us today in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Johnson, please come forward to the podium. You're going to lead us in the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And everyone, please rise. Lord, we pray that your wisdom guide the decisions made today so that the common good is promoted and the vulnerable of our society are not forgotten. We also ask your protection for all of us and our families. May we never forget how much you love each one of us and that may also extend this love to each other, even those with whom we may disagree. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I ask you to stay there for one second because I want to acknowledge and thank you for coming down here today, for spending your time, and also delivering that concise but beautiful prayer. For everyone here in the gallery or anyone watching online, Ron Johnson is the Executive Director of the Arizona Catholic Conference. In this capacity, he represents Arizona's five Catholic bishops in public policy matters. Since coming to the Arizona Catholic Conference in 2003, Ron has dealt with a wide range of high-profile issues. Ron received three degrees at Arizona State University and is the recipient of numerous awards for his community service, including the Catholic Physicians Guild Evangelium Vitae Award, the St. Thomas More Award, the Han Kachina Award, and the Outstanding Law Student of the Year Award. Ron has been married to his wife Francie for 26 years, and they have four incredible children. And Ron, I want to thank you for your service, not only to the church, but also to our community, to the Valley, and to the state of Arizona. As we can see, you've been involved at least since 2003, so that's a considerably long period of time of service. And when I was thinking about your prayer, that Jesus has taught us that we're going to be judged in how we treat the least of us. And I know that is something that is important for you, your conference, and Bishop Dolan. So please thank the bishop. Maricopa County is very proud and honored to be working with the Catholic Diocese and Catholic charities to do everything we can to help people on a wide variety of issues. And it involves good faith leaders in all denominations to work together with us so we can make sure that we're helping the community. So thank you for coming down here this morning. I appreciate you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Lesko.
I would also like to comment. It is great to see you, Ron. It's been a few years since I've seen you. And when I was in the state legislature, I had the honor to work with Ron. And Ron, I will never forget when I sponsored legislation that was very controversial on a federal level and got all kinds of terrible phone calls and emails how the Catholic Church banded together and bussed people out to support the legislation. It really helped me at that time because I was at a low point when people from all over the nation were calling and saying vile things about me. And you guys really helped out. And I don't know how much you were involved in deciding to do that, but I bet you were. And so I greatly appreciated it. It was a turning point for me, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Lesko. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, it's been a number of years as well. I think, yeah, there's three of us that work directly with Ron on a number of issues. But it's great to see you. I mean, Ron, Mr. Chairman, was really a pillar at the Capitol. People go to and ask their opinions on various issues. I probably made you a little bit more upset than my colleagues, you know? I was kind of on the other side on some of the issues, not all of them, but some of the issues. But the one thing we've always had in common is how do we service our community? How do we help families? How do we help kids? How do we make our community stronger and do it together? And I think that's what you contribute. You were able to bring both sides together, both political aisles together. And that's not an easy task at times at the Capitol, but you were able to do it. And you would do it with dignity, respect. You listened to both sides. You made sure everyone had an opportunity to talk and give their opinions. And we're a better state having you down there. So thank you, Ron, for everything you have done for, on behalf of the state of Arizona, the county, and our community.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Madam Vice Chair.
It's good to see you. I kind of fall somewhere in between Supervisor Lesko and Supervisor Gallardo because I was not always on your side on the issues. But what I remember the most was how kind you were. And when you get involved in these culture wars, the passions get very heated. People get very upset, but you were always so kind. And I truly appreciate it. It's glad to see you. Just very glad to see you.
It's good to see you all, too. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, moving on. Pet Showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. I see Kim. Please introduce us to the star of today's pet showcase. And according to my notes, it's Ella Rose, who, I don't know, is she cooperative today? Oh, look at her. No, it's not her. It's not Ella.
This one's a little heavier than Ella Rose. Ella Rose is at our Everyday Adoption Center, so she moved on me. So this is Chimney. Chimney is about two years old. We think a schnauzer mix of some sort. He arrived at the shelter as a stray just a couple days ago, really, about five days ago. He was following someone home from work, which I call that the dog distribution system. That means it should be their dog. And he just hopped right into their car and tried to go home with them. The finder did say that he got along with their other dog but was scared of their cat. So that's fair. It happens. But we do think he would go along pretty much in any home, just knowing as much as we do about him. He is very friendly. He hasn't met a stranger. His preferred form of greeting is leaping on you and headbutting you. And apparently, he likes to be held. But he would do, again, good in any home that's willing to teach him how to do some tricks, maybe some basic obedience. We don't know if he knows any tricks just yet. Also, would do good in a home that is willing to give him a bath because as I'm holding him, I think he really needs a bath. My clothes might smell the rest of the day. Normally, his adoption fee would be $250 because he is such a small guy. But we are having an adoption event right now sponsored by Hill Science Diet, so his adoption fee is waived through this Sunday, the 14th, and he is at our West Shelter.
That's great. You know, Kim, every time you bring a dog, I always try to think of someone I know that dog would be great for. But I was thinking with a name like Chimney, there's a jolly guy from the North Pole who loves chimneys. Who I think if he's watching right now, first of all, he should know we've all been very nice this year.
Yes.
But secondly, I think he needs a dog.
You know, and I think that guy you're referencing, like, he doesn't normally get gifts himself. So this would be a great gift.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if he's listening. Okay. Thank you so much. Good luck to you, Chimney. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to a presentation from the county manager, Jennifer Berkorski. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Just wanted to introduce our year in review video. We've had an incredible year. And before we show the video, I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank the board for your leadership, which is what has made all of this possible. So Chairman Galvin in particular, thank you for your steady guidance throughout the year. The goals that you set at the start of your chairmanship drove many of the accomplishments that we're about to see. And also, your focus on strengthening economic opportunity, including creating our first-ever Economic Development Officer and also initiating the overhaul of the zoning ordinance, were game changers for us at the county. I also want to thank the entire board for your leadership and support. I feel genuinely privileged to work with all of you. And you are true public servants that are making Maricopa County stronger, more resilient, and more responsive to the people that we all serve. So the progress that's reflected in this video mirrors the priorities that you have set, all of you have set this year, and the trust that you've placed in the staff. I also want to thank the assistant county managers for their dedication and leadership, including Marcy Flanagan, Zach Sheera, Darcy Coburn, and Blanca Caballero. And also our incredible staff. I truly think we have some of the best staff in the country. And they're smart, dedicated, and hardworking. And you will see their fingerprints on every project, every improvement, every accomplishment that you see in this video. They make the county run, and they do it with excellence. And finally, thanks to our communications team, Jessie and Scott and Jason, for pulling this together. They've done a wonderful job capturing a year's worth of work and progress in a way that's both meaningful and energizing. So you're going to notice two of the items, though, that we highlight in this video are on today's agenda for your consideration and both are chairman's priorities. So one is the establishment of a Friends of Animal Care and Control organization. And the second is the comprehensive overhaul of the zoning ordinance, which was a huge effort, long overdue. And the team did an unbelievable job of getting it here today. So we're excited to bring those two items forward for your consideration on today's agenda. So thank you again for your leadership and your partnership and everything you do for the residents of Maricopa County. And let's take a look at our 2025 Year in Review.
Maricopa County is the most fiscally responsible large county in the United States. We have lowered the overall tax rate five years in a row.
This building provides the foundation to conducting the types of elections that Maricopa County voters have come to expect.
We're going to build 50 new units, transitional housing for homeless veterans.
I want to thank our staff as well as state and local officials, especially first responders, for acting so quickly.
Let's look to see what we can do to help from a nutrition side, healthcare, from transportation, air quality.
Maricopa County made smart use of taxpayer dollars this year, maintaining a AAA bond rating.
We're the largest government in the country without general obligation debt.
50% of the county's budget was invested in public safety, including pay increases for sheriff's office deputies and emergency dispatchers and one-time bonuses for detention officers.
I've never felt the love, support, and compassion the current board has towards the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office.
One, two, three.
Maricopa County broke ground on a brand-new, state-of-the-art tabulation and election center.
We're very excited to be in a space large enough to accommodate enough people in one shift to count ballots faster.
Chair, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Board of Supervisors also approved a secure IT audit of the elections process and administered four elections this year, including a special primary and general election for a vacated congressional seat. for a vacated congressional seat. Maricopa County increased prosperity for residents, establishing the county's first-ever Economic Development Office, overhauling a decades-old zoning ordinance, making it easier to read, and allowing projects to move forward more quickly, creating 730 affordable housing units in 2025.
It feels amazing to be able to live at a place where I grew up, where I can also afford on my own.
Maricopa County also continued to lead the way in job training for in-demand industries, creating 3,000 apprentices by 2026 in construction, advanced manufacturing, and healthcare, 3,888 job placements in 2025, and 469 veteran job placements.
I hike a lot.
In 2025, Maricopa County expanded successful programs to keep residents healthy and safe. Environmental services cracked down on unpermitted mobile food vendors.
It was a huge problem along what I call the I-17 corridor.
During a three-month surveillance period, health specialists investigated 111 complaints, completed 55 food seizures, and seized 7,850 pounds of unsafe meat.
Hello, good morning. This is Bertha with 211 Ops. How can I assist you?
When Mother Nature hit, Maricopa County was ready. Public health helped reduce heat deaths for a second straight summer by funding 24-hour heat relief sites, almost 8,000 lift rides to cooling shelters, distributing more than 21,000 water bottles, and 309 cases of electrolytes. Meanwhile, during the monsoon, county departments teamed up to respond to sometimes historic
We actually have someone on staff 24/7 to monitor rainfall, stream flow, any storms that are coming in.
I want to thank Chairman Galvin for moving so quickly from the county perspective to help with their emergency declaration. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
Maricopa County continued to position itself as one of the top employers in the region.
You guys are playing together.
Opening an onsite employee childcare center, creating the Rising Star Award for future county leaders, and getting national recognition for innovative programs and services with a record 84 awards from the National Association of Counties.
Oh, I want her.
Animal Care and Control found new ways to connect with the community while maintaining a save rate above 90% for homeless dogs. They expanded hours of operation, helping bring in more adopters, and took steps to create a new nonprofit. The Friends of Animal Care and Control will raise funds to strengthen the quality of care for shelter animals while easing the pressure on public resources.
All these efforts will make a real difference in the lives of both our two-legged and four-legged residents.
Whether people or pets, Maricopa County invested wisely in its residents in 2025, enhancing security and expanding prosperity. One vote, one smile, one helping hand at a time.
That's just a little bit of what we did. That applause is for the great staff, the 13,000 employees that work here at Maricopa County. As we say here on the board often, we consider ourselves a board of directors that provide a vision and a mission, but it's these folks who work every single day. First of all, the communications team who put this together, Jesse, Scott, and whoever else worked on it, absolutely terrific. Thank you so much for your work. You're always there with the supervisors as we are traveling throughout the county, interacting with our constituents, interacting with stakeholders, and being able to put that all in a very concise and really entertaining video was really terrific. It's not easy to wrap up an entire year like that. But I want to close by thanking our county manager, Jen Perkorsky. You are the straw that stirs the drink. As the CEO of this $4 billion organization, we're just so proud to have you as a county manager. You're an excellent public servant. You're an excellent citizen and just a great neighbor as well. And you have had some awards and accolades this year in the community for your service to Maricopa County. And you've been with us for decades. And on behalf of the board, we're very appreciative of you. So thank you, Jen. I'll have more to say next month, but if anyone wants to comment on this video or otherwise, we can just keep going. Supervisor Gardo.
Yeah, no, real quickly, I mean, it's, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It really shows the great work that the men and women of this county do every day. I mean, we can sit up here and get the pads, but it is all our hard-working men and women that come to Maricopa County every day. And it's, you know, we all have issues and challenges in our private lives that we have to deal with, and these men and women come with, I would imagine, same similar issues and challenges. And they're, they just focus. They're laser-focused in servicing the people of Maricopa County and helping every day, and you see it. And these are the true heroes here in Maricopa County. So it's great video, and thank you to all our employees for the great work they continue to do year in and year out.
Supervisor Gardo, thank you. Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. January 6th will be a year since I started this job. And I've had different opportunities in my life, spent nine years in the Arizona State Legislature, almost seven years in Congress. And I have to say, I'm very impressed with Maricopa County, my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. We get along well. And I'm impressed with you, Mr. Chairman, for some of the ideas and innovations you've had and pushed as you were chairman. This is, I tell people it's a very frugal county. People don't really realize that because when I had, I represented 803,000 people in Congress, and I had 12 employees. Now I represent 950,000 to 960,000 people in the West Valley, and I have three employees. When I started, we had two, two employees. And I came here, and we didn't have paper clips. And I was like, do you not have paper clips? So they bought me a box of paper clips. I mean, we're a frugal bunch, and I think that's why we have this great bond rating. We don't go out and borrow a bunch of money. You know, we're really quite, compared to counties of similar size, we're very fiscally conservative, and that's where I am. I don't like raising taxes. I like the fiscal conservatism, and so I applaud my fellow board members. I applaud you, Jen. You've done a great job. I'm very impressed with you and your work, and I'm very impressed with a lot of the county employees. Excellent work. Thank you. It's been a great year so far.
Thank you Supervisor Lesko. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. And Jen, thank you. The spirit of customer service shines through. I've worked for Fortune 50 companies before, and when I'm with staff, I realize that we've hired some of the best people in the area. And you can feel the spirit of wanting to serve, and that comes from leadership, having a servant's heart. And then Chairman, I want to thank you. You know, I was at an event last night and spoke, and I think I opened the discussion thanking you. You weren't there, but I was thanking you for your leadership in driving some of the initiatives that we're moving forward. We're going to hear about a couple of those today, especially with the zoning ordinance, the animal control. But moreover, you came with a mission plan, and then staff did a phenomenal job of executing that. So I want to share my gratitude to you for that, because it's been great. But, you know, a year in, what I've realized quickly is that this is a lean machine here, and it is a business that is doing more with less. And that's a testament. When we look at other counties like us around the country, our expenditure and our tax rate compared to them is sometimes half. And we're still providing the same services for the 30-some-odd departments that were responsible for per-state statutes. So thank you again, Chairman, but especially thank you, Jen. And thanks for taking all my wild calls in the middle of the day or on the weekends, but I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Stewart. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to start with you. Your leadership has been phenomenal. And let me tell you, I've worked with a lot of different board chairs, including myself. You took a very, a board that was under siege, in a sense. And you stood us up, and you pointed us towards the outside community, and you re-engaged on such a vigorous level across every front. And you turned a corner, huge corner for us. So I am overcoming my resentment of you for banning candy corn. No, you are such an exemplary leader, and that's, there's a lot to be said for setting the tone, which takes me to you, Madam County Manager. One of the most humble people I have ever met, with really no reason to be humble. It's just how you approach the world and approach life. You are an incredible, amazing leader. You are always thinking about your staff. So my track is very similar to Supervisor Lesko's, except she ran for school board, lost, and went to the legislature. I ran for school board and won. You might say derailed, but it did take me through a different level of government. Ten years on the school board, six years on the Arizona School Facilities Board, and ten years in the legislature, two and a half years on the Maricopa County Hospital Board. And as I said, I've worked with a lot of different government entities. I am an anti-bureaucracy fiend. I haven't found any of that here. What I have found is a very thin level of management. That means you don't have to get through all these layers to get to the individuals that are actually doing the work. And an attitude of can-do, solve the problem, work the problem, make it happen, and it has been such a pleasure. I won't ever lose my vigilance, but my vigilance in this job has been so rewarded. And I thank you, and I thank every employee in Maricopa County for this opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Okay, once again, Jennifer, thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning hearings, I'm going to recuse myself from items 6 through 15. So Madam Vice Chair, will you please take over the conduct of this meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors, on items 6 through 14, are there any items you wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the board will now consider items 6 through 14, Arquahala Energy Generation and Industrial Complex, Dandelion Energy Park, Mariposa Energy Park, Harquahala Sun 3V, McHenry Buckeye Industrial Zoning, Roosevelt Logistics Center, and Red Hawk Power Plant. Is there a motion? Supervisor Lesko.
I move that we approve items 6 through 14.
Excuse me? Speaker forms. Come on.
This is on the consent agenda?
No.
And I had requested if any supervisors wanted any of these items removed. The answer was no. We will proceed to a vote.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the regular agenda, number 15, Hasiyampa Ranch. First, I would ask Mr. Ellsworth and Mr. Gerard to come forward, because I believe there may be questions. And I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, are there any speaker forms received on item number
Madam Chair, yes, we do have three speaker forms on this item. We have received one that wishes to speak in favor and two in opposition.
On item number 15, correct?
Number 15, that is correct.
So I will proceed to a presentation from Mr. Ellsworth. Mr. Gerard, please. And then we will entertain public participation.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. For your consideration today is...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Ellsworth. I'm the director for the Planning and Development Department here at Maricopa County, and I have with me Darren Gerard, our planning manager.
Thank you.
For your consideration is CPA 25008, known as Hasiyampa Ranch. It's a major comprehensive plan amendment requesting to change the Tonopah Arlington Area Plan land use designation from Hasiyampa Ranch DMP to industrial for approximately 2,077 acres. It's located near the northeast corner of Camelback Road and the Wickenburg Road alignments in the Tonopah area. The applicant proposes to remove the longstanding but undeveloped Hasiyampa Ranch DMP that was approved in 2007 and instead designate the property as industrial to allow future development of light industrial uses. Any actual uses would be reviewed through a future rezoning and subsequent site planning. Site's currently zoned with a mix of rural 43, single-family, multifamily, and commercial districts that were established under the original DMP but were never developed. The site is surrounded predominantly by natural desert and rural zoning, but also lies adjacent to significant existing and planned industrial activity. To the east and southeast, two active mine operations. To the west, the board approved Belmont Industrial Comprehensive Plan Amendment last year, designating roughly 5,000 acres for light and heavy industrial uses. To the south is largely a large lot, rural residential. The area is also strategically located near the future I-11 corridor and regional freight movements, making industrial employment centers more feasible than the previously envisioned residential master plan community. There are no outstanding concerns from reviewing county agencies. Staff has received significant neighborhood opposition, including five objections submitted following the commission's recommendation. A petition of 100 confirmed signatures was received, as well as an additional online petition. Concerns raised include impacts of potential industrial activity on traffic, property values, noise, lighting, water use, and the environment, protection of the Hasiyampa River, and Jackrabbit Wash wildlife corridors, and compatibility with the existing large lot rural residents. Staff notes that there are nine properties within the 300-foot notification boundaries, and all nine have expressed opposition. Staff presented this request to the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 6, 2025. The commission voted eight to zero, recommending approval of CPA 25008, finding the request consistent with the goals and policies of both the county's comprehensive plan and the Tonopah Arlington Area Plan. Key considerations were the original DMP has remained undeveloped for nearly 20 years and is unlikely to be built out due to changing economics, water supply, and development conditions. The proposed industrial designation is compatible with the region's emerging land use pattern, and the proposal supports employment growth, private sector investment, and the county's stated goal of placing industrial uses where infrastructure is planned or can be extended to be developed. With that, I take any questions.
Okay. And then I want to ask Supervisor Lesko to lead off. Would you like to hear from the applicant first, or would you, do you have questions specific for staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have questions for staff, and then I'll leave it up to you if you want to go to the applicant and then the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions. You said this is close to the approved Belmont project, and how close is it approximately to Belmont?
Belmont is to the west. Excuse me, Madam Chairman, Member Lesko. The Belmont development is approximately about two miles to the west.
Okay. And remind me, what did we approve for Belmont area? What kind of commercial industrial uses there?
So similar to this request, Member Lesko, it was a request for a modification to the land use designation. So, and similar to this, it prepares the property as a planned land use for future zoning requests to come forward before this board. So what we approved was an industrial land use designation in the Arlington-Tonopah Area Plan.
And it's my understanding that originally the city of Buckeye had some concerns, but now that they're neutral, is that correct?
That is correct. Initially, we had received an opposition letter from the city of Buckeye with concerns related to the wildlife corridor and the preservation of the natural environment. The applicant subsequently met with the city of Buckeye and agreed to mitigating any of their concerns during any rezoning entitlement of the property. With that, they submitted a revised letter withdrawing their opposition in those regards.
And thank you, Madam... And thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Ellsworth. And currently, it's my understanding that currently this is, has a zoning entitlement for higher density residential and commercial zoning. Is that correct?
Member Lesko, that is correct. The original DMP was for a high-density, mixed-use type of environment.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Questions from other supervisors? I have a quick question. I wanted to ask, was there opposition present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting? And if so, what did they say?
Madam Chairman, yes, there were approximately, I had the number, three to five people that spoke at the commission hearing. Their concerns were in line with what I presented in the presentation.
Thank you.
Relatively concerns with the nature of industrial development up against rural current rural development.
Thank you very much. Ms. Riddell, do you have any comments on behalf of the applicant before we proceed to public participation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I should have a presentation they can pull up for me. By the way, that title also sounds pretty good on you. So, Madam Chair.
Who's your what?
Madam Chair.
Oh.
Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell, 6750. My pleasure to be here this morning on behalf of Arizona Land Consulting Anita Verma. She's going to say a few words when I finish up here. If you would jump to the next slide. So the site we're talking about is over 2,000 acres. It's out in Hasiyampa, obviously. It's around the 339th Avenue alignment. Next. The existing DMP for this site, it is actually, it was entitled back in 2008. It was planned for more than 5,700 residential units. It's a mix of everything from multifamily to single-family, 62 acres, commercial, golf course, elementary schools, fire, police. Obviously, this didn't come to fruition, but it was very intensely and densely entitled. Next slide, if you would. Those entitlements actually carry through even to zoning. So the site is zoned for that, as I mentioned, fairly dense and intense entitlements in line with the DMP back in 2008. Next. So we are here today requesting a major comprehensive plan amendment, asking to change this land use to industrial. I'm going to demonstrate to you why, if you would. The next slide. Again, this is changing that major comprehensive plan amendment, that master plan community, changing that entire designation to industrial. Next. The site itself actually sits along that Jackrabbit Wash. A large portion of that is already used for a sand and gravel operation. Everything you see there in pink is both an existing and planned sand and gravel operation. As I'm sure this board knows, sand and gravel operations are exempt from zoning. So we are here just, we've incorporated that in our submittal because it didn't make a lot of sense to have a little remnant corner of a master plan community and to recognize the industrial. But that sand and gravel operation is about 390 acres and extends actually offsite to 421 acres. Next. So when you look at the sand and gravel operation we have on our east, and then you look what is planned for Belmont, everything you see there, the dark gray, you'd asked about where Belmont is, that's the location. That is planned for industrial uses. There are also some light industrial uses. So we now find ourselves frankly sandwiched between a sand and gravel operation that's pretty large to our east, and then that planned future Belmont industrial. Obviously, the transportation corridor coming in. We just feel this site is much better suited for industrial type of employment type of uses. Next. I would also point out that there's even zoning taking place in the area. This was a site, it's only gone to P&amp;Z, that was rezoned to heavy industrial. Again, this area is changing. Next. So what we are proposing is indeed consistent with your comprehensive plan. It achieves balanced, efficient development patterns, obviously contributes in a significant way to the regional economy. This is something that will bring much-needed infrastructure out here to this area. Those are costs that will be borne by the development. Next. It is also consistent with the Tonopah Arlington Area Plan. Again, we are preserving that Hasiyampa River where it is not in the sand and gravel operation. We're committed to continuing to work with the conservancy, worked with Buckeye, and will be improving the roadways out here and the infrastructure out here in this area. Next. As I mentioned, we did collaborate with Buckeye. They initially had some concerns. We were able to work with them, include some language, and no longer have concerns today. Next. And then outreach. This has been a case where we have done outreach. We did have some folks, I think Ron and Kathy are here, that came to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Very lovely folks. We sat, we met with them after that as well. There are a lot of things I think we can do for the concerns that we have heard. They're just more appropriately done when I have a zoning case that's coming along. So here today, it's the comprehensive plan. We're required to bring those forward on an annual cycle. We do look forward to continuing to work with this community as we bring forward the zoning application on landscapes, setback, infrastructure, and what that looks like. That's very important to us and to my client. With that, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would respectfully request your approval. I do have a client that wants to hop up and just say a few words, if that's okay.
Please. And then we'll open the floor to the supervisors for questions.
Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak here today. As the landowner and developer-
If you would state your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Anita Verma Lallian. I'm the landowner and developer of Hasiyampa Ranch. This project carries a great deal of meaning to me, both personally and professionally. My family has spent many years contributing to the growth of Maricopa County, and that legacy is something that I take very seriously. Our work has always been centered on responsible planning, respect for the land, and a commitment to creating communities that serve both current and future generations. With Hasiyampa Ranch, we have brought that same philosophy forward. We've worked collaboratively with the county staff, local stakeholders, and planning experts to ensure this project aligns with your long-range vision and complements the natural characters of the region. Just as importantly, we recognize that meaningful development requires meaningful engagement with the community. We've appreciated the opportunity to listen to and work with the community throughout this process, and we remain fully committed to ongoing dialogue. As this zoning case continues, we look forward to maintaining that engagement, answering any questions, incorporating feedback, and ensuring that the final outcome reflects both the needs and aspirations of the people who live and work here. Our goal is not simply to develop land, but it's to contribute to a thoughtful, sustainable pattern of growth that benefits residents and strengthens the county's future. Because of our commitment to doing things the right way, we, and because of the deep personal connection my family and I have to development of this region, I respectfully request your support in approving this project. Thank you so much for your consideration and for your amazing continued leadership in guiding the future of the county.
Thank you. Are there questions? Supervisor Lesko, for the developer or for Ms. Riddell?
Probably Ms. Riddell.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't know if this is for you, Ms. Riddell, or if it's for staff. Do we have a map of the opposition, the neighbors that are opposing this? I assume it's to the south where the neighborhood is.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lesko, I don't have a map of the opposition. It is to the south, however. It is sort of in that little nook, if you would.
And these neighbors, I know some of them are going to speak, but can you speak to the fact of, are they on acre properties? What's there now?
Generally, large lots, yes. Acre-plus type properties.
And do you have, Madam Chair, Ms. Riddell, do you have a timeline on when you're going to do the zoning application?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lesko, we hope to file it in the next 30 to 60 days.
And Madam Chair and Ms. Riddell, do you have an idea of what you want to build there?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lesko, it's primarily data centers.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Riddell, you and Ms. Verma said that you want to continue to work with the neighbors and their concerns. What kind of concerns do they have, and what are you proposing that you do?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Lesko. The concerns we heard were related to a change in land use. I mean, obviously, the area today is very undeveloped, so any change out there is going to appear quite startling. I think in particular, I don't want to put words in their mouth. I'm sure they're going to stand up here and speak for themselves. But it was concerns about what is it going to look like? What is the water use going to be? What are the setbacks going to be? How are the roads going to be handled and managed? A lot of those questions, I think, when I have actual site plans and uses, they're going to be significantly easier for me to answer. The site itself, being over 2,000 acres, we do have quite a bit of real estate that gives me some good opportunities to be able to create meaningful setbacks, open space corridors, view corridors, good landscaping. There frankly is topography on the site that we will not be able to develop and won't develop. There are some washes on the site that we will not be developing. So I think as we come forward, we can put together a really thoughtful land use plan that helps address some of those concerns. And the opposition that we heard from is kind of in a smaller pocket area, which gives us a chance to work with that, too.
And Madam Chair and Ms. Riddell, remind me, what's happening with the sand and gravel operation? Is that going to continue?
Yes, Supervisor Lesko, that will be continuing.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from other supervisors? Okay. We will then proceed to public participation. Madam Clerk, and keep in mind, you have, what, three minutes? Two minutes. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will first call on our one speaker form to speak in favor. This is from Seapond, I'm sorry, Elzita.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the board, Sapan Delizada. I'm with the Arizona Technology Council, here to speak in support of this major comprehensive plan amendment. Arizona Technology Council is supportive of all types of development to improve and move the tech innovation sector forward, and we believe this major comprehensive plan amendment will allow that. We need to create jobs in the future I-11 corridor, and this project or this rezoning will lead to that. So thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Next speaker in opposition, and this speaker, Madam Chair, is online, Sharice Campbell.
May I ask a question, please, before we proceed? This is an online participant. Brooke, may I ask you, please, to explain the reasons for the online participation in this instance?
Yes, Madam Chair. The virtual comment in opposition will be allowed because this is a regular statutory hearing item required to be heard by law that is distinguished from regular public comment, which is not required by law.
Thank you very much. If I could ask our speaker to proceed, and please restate your name for the record.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. My name's Sharice Campbell. My personal land and my business property butts right up against the site in discussion. The success of my hatchery business depends upon the stress-free existence of my free-range birds. They exercise natural mating, nesting, and young rearing behaviors, not unlike wild turkeys' natural life cycles, which big industry would disrupt. The stress the birds will endure will be hazardous to their health and well-being, compromising their immune systems and making them more vulnerable to illness and death. Even if they could continue producing and living under that strain and good conscience, I cannot continue putting my birds through such trauma, so I would more than likely be compelled to close my hatchery doors if this was approved. And with my personal hypersensitivity to anthropogenic lights and noises, my own mental health will be threatened. My personal and professional fears aside, I want to address some of the points made in the project summary. Firstly, the entire basis for choosing this site for data center development seems to be tied to the Bill Gates Smart City concept, which was first touted back in 2017. There's been no Belmont development since its purchase and conception nearly a decade ago. And what if it finally does get off the ground? It's being pointed to as if it justifies other plans for more development, more natural resource depletion, because it will be compatible to surrounding industrial sites, when in reality, this should just be another reason why this piece of land should not be developed and instead preserved. Much-needed infrastructure improvement. Our community is rural. We don't need or want paved roads that will exacerbate the heat island effect in the summer. What is termed economic growth is another way of saying environmental degradation. Accessing adequate water supply for the proposed Belmont City in this drought area is going to be challenging enough without this industrial development, a massive 1.5 gigawatt data center, which could demand 10 million gallons of water per day versus the 1.8 million gallons for 6,000 single-family residences that were planned in the original 2007 Hasiyampa Ranch DMP.
Ms. Campbell, if you could please summarize and complete your comments.
At the very least, if they were not using water cooling but air cooling technology, it would likely hike up our electric bills, and it could actually cause shortages and blackouts. I just want to say, it comes down to the fact that data centers are not appropriate for this desert rural site due to lack of water resources and the impact on the electrical grid. That includes noise, light, electromagnetic pollution, which will negatively impact wildlife and the physical, mental health of nearby residents. No matter how you frame your mitigation efforts, there is no circumvent these impacts.
Thank you.
I do want to say, I wanted to mention in that moratorium-
Ms. Campbell.
-on the approval and construction of new data centers.
Ms. Campbell. May I ask Supervisor Lesko, you said you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you're getting her attention because her time has expired. Maybe she doesn't know that. I do have a question for staff. One of the items that Ms. Campbell said in her testimony was that the land should be preserved. Do you think that that's plausible with the current land use of this area? Because isn't the current land use for high-density residential and commercial?
Correct. Madam Chair, Member Lesko, currently, the current zoning entitlement of the property is for that master plan community. And as we mentioned before, it includes multifamily, single-family, commercial, and open space entitlement. So currently, the densities that could be built up there would more than likely not be considered a preservation of the natural desert environment, but it would be developed in accordance with any environmental laws or rules that would be part of development.
Thank you. That's all my questions right now.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Campbell. Supervisor Lesko, I appreciate your clarifying that you have a, speakers have a two-minute limit, and that's why I asked you to shorten your comments, Ms. Campbell. But you have been heard. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Next up, Kathleen Fletcher in opposition.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name-
And you have two minutes.
Yeah, my name is Kathy Fletcher, and together with my husband Ron, we own one acre parcel bordering the property referenced. As demonstrated by the petitions we submitted, residents in the vicinity are deeply troubled by the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Our primary objective centers on the principle of people over profit. And while this project may yield financial benefits for the landowners, developers, and Maricopa County, it does not offer value to the Tonopah community, particularly in terms of employment opportunities and local growth. Data centers do not hire tons of people that are, that our community would get those jobs. So the development process is anticipated to introduce hundreds, if not more, temporary workers, resulting in increased dust noise and construction until it's completed. After the construction, persistent noise pollution and ongoing concerns about water, power usage, which were addressed in our electronic objections, will continue to affect the community. These issues are especially troubling for residents living adjacent to the property, as they may experience declining property values and negative impacts on nearby C3-gallonacious hatchery, as Ms. Campbell addressed. We acknowledge that artificial intelligence is currently being pursued with intensity of a gold rush. However, history demonstrates that such a, seriously? Such rushes can produce significant consequences. It is critical Maricopa County's residential areas are not overtaken by the industry and at the expense of our residents and quality- at the expense of our residents and quality of life in Maricopa County must protect the residential communities from overwhelmed by the industry. Rural residents, rural residential zones like Tonopah should not be targeted for industrial development that could transform them into industrial wastelands.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, we respectfully-
And, I'm sorry, you are out of time, and thank you for the summary. Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, I have no other speaker forms.
Hearing no other speakers, Ms. Riddell, do you have any comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Again, we request approval.
Further discussion or questions for staff amongst the board members?
Madam Chair, I do have one question, or actually two for the applicant. A couple of questions that were asked or brought up were regarding water and energy. I know that a lot of data centers, I mean, there's a national security issue regarding data centers and AI. We've got to be in the front of that race, and I think Arizona will be a leader in that area, both from an energy production standpoint. But I'm seeing a lot of data centers bringing on their own energy online, to not tap into the grid, and I think there's a concern about energy rates and things like that. And then I heard, I've heard a lot about air cooling versus water cooling. Do we know if the applicant's clients or customers will be using those?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Stewart, at this point, I don't have the details. When we come forward with a zoning case, that would be the appropriate time for us to be able to answer those questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nope. Hearing no further discussion amongst the board members, is there a motion for item number 15?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank the constituents that have came here today to speak and are in attendance, and the constituent that was online speaking. And I also want to thank the applicant for their commitment to continue to work with the neighbors if this comprehensive plan amendment is approved. Madam Chair, I move that item 15 be approved in accordance with the commission recommendation as printed on the agenda. I know there is opposition to this item from the residential neighborhood to the south. The opposition has spoken to loss of rural lifestyle and loss of natural wildlife habitat. I understand that. I get it. I understand the applicant is working with the Arizona Game and Fish to develop in accordance with their guidelines and conservation strategies. The property will not develop as rural residential in the future. It already has higher-density residential and community-commercial zoning entitlement. So I think it's unrealistic to think it's just going to be barren desert for eternity. The question is, should the area's rural lifestyle be impacted by a master-planned community with higher-density residential and commercial development or a light industrial or industrial campus? I'm comfortable that industrial and rural residential can coexist, and that's why I am making a motion to approve this item.
Well, thank you for your motion for approval and comments. Supervisor Lesko, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded following the vote. If any other supervisors wish to make comment, I will open the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any further comments? I'll just make a quick one in follow-up to your response, to your comments, Supervisor Lesko, and appreciate your leadership on this issue. I think the comments or the concerns can better be addressed, as Ms. Riddell pointed out, with the zoning application, which is following, thankfully, right behind it. I'm not, I understand comprehensive plan approvals need to happen annually, but thank you for immediately following with a zoning application. I'll be watching for it. Thank you. Chair Galvin has finished his recusal and is re-entering the building.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, under planning and zoning hearings under regular agenda, we have item number 16, which is the Maricopa County zoning ordinance. We're going to hear a presentation from staff, but I just want to check in with the clerk. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker forms received in item 16?
Chairman, I do have several speaker forms to speak in favor and in opposition, and you let me know when you wish me to call on the speakers.
Okay. Why don't we do with the comments first from public comment, and then we'll do the presentation. Okay. Can you please call out three names so people know that they're up next, they're on deck, and they're in the hole?
Chairman, first of all, just for the record, Autumn Johnson registered her, or his position in favor, just for the record. The first three I will call are in favor. Again, C-Pand, Elzida, Stephen Anderson, and Kimberly Faddal.
Okay.
Hello, sir. Good to see you.
Chairman Galvin, members of the board, Sipand Alizada with the Arizona Technology Council, 2800 North Central Avenue, Suite 1530. I just want to take a moment and thank staff for the extreme amount of hard work put into updating this zoning ordinance. This was not an easy lift, but staff did it. Staff got input from the community, staff got input from stakeholders. One of my, the people who I look up to in this industry once told me that zoning ordinances, these documents, these are living documents that need to be updated, refreshed, maintained, and taken care of in order to keep up with the times. And we at the Arizona Technology Council believe that Maricopa County is doing exactly this with this update, so that we can preserve Arizona's tech, innovation economy, and the county's economic future. So, once again, thank you all for the hard work. Thank you for the input, and we are here to support the zoning ordinance updates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for advocacy on important issues here in the valley. Madam Clerk?
Next three, Stephen Anderson, Kimberly Faddal, Ben Graff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Stephen Anderson, 40 North Central, 20th floor in Phoenix.
Can you please pull your microphone closer to you?
Yes, how's that?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. I'll start again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Anderson. For your record, my address is 40 North Central, 20th floor in Phoenix. I'm a land use attorney with Gammon and Murnum. I'm here today to speak in favor of the zoning ordinance update. I had the privilege to serve on the task force, as referenced in your staff report. We did our work with your staff back in the spring, and I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve in a small role in this very important process. I wanted to also comment that I did have the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission hearing on this item, to indicate my support for the proposed ordinance at that hearing. I heard a very detailed and thoughtful discussion about battery-energy storage systems, and I think that the commission has provided you all with a very sound recommendation, and we encourage you all to adopt that recommendation as part of your consideration today. It is terrific to see this effort come to this point after so much work by so many people, including, of course, your staff, and also your consultants, who did a great job. And there was a lot of public outreach in this process as well, that's detailed in the staff report. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to have served a very small role in that, and encourage you all to endorse the update. I also need to reserve the right in the future to come back and complain about some details. But with that, I encourage support and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Next up, Kimberly Faddal, Ben Graff, and Fay Souders, signed to speak only if necessary, but also in favor.
This microphone, okay, got it. Hello, Supervisor. My name is Kimberly Faddal, and I'm a resident of Glendale, a special needs educator, and an advocate for a cleaner, more sustainable future for our communities across Maricopa County. That being said, I urge you to update our county's battery-energy storage system, best known as BES, to reflect modern technology and best practices around the setbacks. In order to support our communities of the future, we really need to take action for better power in our communities right now. Energy storage products are more than just energy facilities. They are directly invest, or they directly invest in our local communities while strengthening our grid. Any energy storage project that comes into our county is bound to generate millions of dollars in lifetime tax revenue, help funding essential school districts, which I am very passionate about, local fire districts, and community services without raising our taxes, which is very good, all while creating hundreds of construction jobs in the process. Of course, we want to build projects that are safe for our communities and families. Today's energy storage facilities are designated to meet the nation's most rigorous fire and safety standards, with systems that automatically isolate any issues. Developers even provide specialized training and equipment to our local fire and emergency service departments, ensuring first responders are fully prepared. That being said, I urge you to update the current BES ordinance to require a 150-foot setback from our battery structures. So, I don't want to be looking back 10 to 20 years from now, saying, "Why the heck didn't we do something about this sooner?" And I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Next in favor, Ben Graff, followed by Fay Souders, and Luimar Garza wishes to speak, but she did not mark the box in favor or opposition.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ben Graff with the law firm of Quarles &amp; Brady at 2 North Central Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. I am here today on behalf of APS, and just again want to start by praising staff. This was a text amendment well-done. We have seen numerous text amendments in the last couple of years, various jurisdictions. This one was comprehensive. It was inclusive. They even invited zoning lawyers to the meetings, so we appreciated that. And so, we just wanted to compliment that and let you know that we're in full favor, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did want to highlight a very important change recommended to you today by the Planning and Zoning Commission, was the reduction of the 500-foot required buffer back to the federal standard of 100 feet. And why APS is in favor of that reduction is twofold. One is APS is in the business of sending out the requests for proposals for battery-energy storage developers to respond to, and the number of responses is directly related to available properties. A flat-out 500-foot requirement would just simply take out of the running numerous viable sites that should be evaluated. Number two is that we have worked very closely with Mr. Ellsworth, Mr. Gerard, on a unique tool that the county has called an Industrial Unit Plan of Development, an IUPD. This overlay will allow a battery-energy storage applicant to work with staff, to work with this board, and if there is a need for a specific site to have a buffer more than 100 feet, we will be able to codify that and require it still through the IUPD. So, we are not taking that authority away from the county. So, just wanted to thank you for all that. Thank you, staff. Thank you for listening to our comments.
Thank you, Mr. Graff. Madam Clerk?
Next up, in favor, if you wish to speak, Fay Souders, followed by Luimar Garza. Last speaker is in opposition, Jenny Vitale.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the board. My name is Fay Souders, and I'm with BFSO. I'm a land use attorney, and we office at 4343 East Camelback Road, Suite 210, Phoenix, Arizona. First, I'm going to reiterate what you've always already heard. Thank you to both Darren, Tom, and the staff for this endeavor of trying to update this large zoning ordinance. It's a big job, so thank you for that. I'm up here because our law firm represents a lot of renewable energy projects within the state, as well as within the county, and we'd like to express our support of the update as it's written, and also the support of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a well-thought-out approval, and the decision is something that we would like to support. And one highlight that we would like to also zone in on, no pun intended, is that we, with the renewable energy, providing staff the flexibility in order to provide alternatives for buffering, screening, and landscapes, we believe that that flexibility allows the staff to evaluate case by case and offer alternatives where it truly makes sense, based on the visibility and the context of the actual project. That proposed text does not waive or eliminate landscaping requirements, as staff retains full authority to require landscaping where it's needed, and it supports renewable energy development while ensuring high aesthetic standards in public-facing areas. These projects are typically placed in remote areas that require little to no water in areas without infrastructure. Requiring landscape would require permanent irrigation systems, and it would increase cost in water with little public benefit. Lastly, just, I would like to say, there are people, Autumn and other people here, that are in support, so just would like to point that out as well, and just thank you again, and I'd like to reserve time afterwards if there needs to be further discussion about any of these aspects, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next up, Luimar Garza, and last speaker in opposition, Jenny Vitale.
Whoops, let's get back to reality. Luimar Zabetti Garza, backdating is a crime, Leslie. The reason you all passed, and I'm looking at number, this number 16, is that you glibly stated that you were going to provide clarity to certain zoning issues that were not clear. And in fact, what came out on this December 8th meeting, which was Monday, your own planning and zoning staff admitted something shocking. Maricopa County has never established any transition setback when rural land is rezoned to industrial or utilities. That means the only legal standard in effect was a 20-foot rural setback, and it must be applied unless the ordinance is formally amended. Instead of applying the rule, staff rushed to pass all these May applications at this December meeting, because they knew developers would have to resubmit next year, costing them money. They also knew no agency, especially for lithium-ion battery storage, would approve a facility with only a 20-foot buffer. So then started a fictional 100-foot setback that exists, does not exist in county code. Then at this meeting, they attempted to backdate a zoning change to cover the passing of item seven from the November 19th meeting, which was approved to the community's detriment. And Mark Stewart, you even mentioned yesterday, you fixed it. Y'all backdated. That fake 100-foot number was sent to Luke Air Force Base, the Fire Department, and other agencies, all of whom have made decisions based on false zoning information. Had they been given the real 20-foot pass, this would not have passed. So, right now, if you pass this particular one, it voids everything that you just did not permit us to talk about, six through 13 and 15. Make a very wise decision, Michael, Angela, Oscar, Phyllis, and stupid, stupid little Dwight. The office people, you are a bunch of paper-pushing pricks. This right here is 20-foot buffers, so all of the ones that you moved from rural to industrial or utilities are void, null and void. Lawyer up!
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Last speaker, Jenny Vitale in opposition.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Vitale. For the record, I reside in Chandler. I'm not necessarily in opposition. I'm late to the party. I've actually already emailed Darren to just personally thank him for the hard work that went into this. I am no stranger to what this takes to overhaul a document like this. I think you're close. I also think you're under the gun due to state legislature requiring you to meet the January 1st deadline for some of these ADU zoning issues. I've provided Darren with a list of some comments regarding definitions, where I think maybe you have some tidy-up work to do. I'm just going to provide a couple more here today. I don't think you have the definition for setback dialed in correctly. I don't think you have the definition for street-side dialed in correctly. These are still very confusing. And as an engineer who does grading plans for a living, you want these definitions to read not just for the engineering nerds and the staff, but you want the general public to be able to figure these out. So, I will be providing Darren with some comments on those. That doesn't mean that you can't approve it today, but what I think you want to be able to do is revisit it after the first of the year, so that you can dial some of these definitions back in. I think you missed a couple of opportunities with respect to farm animals on land. You put no limit on how many animals somebody can have on their property. That's a huge miss. Unfortunately, we have too many people today that want to shirk their responsibilities. They want to have their pettings, their rotating petting zoos that they can bring to county events and whatnot, and they will pack the animals in, and they don't have the land required to have the animals that they're caring for. They don't care for them. So, I think we really need to revisit how many animals you can have on a property. I know there's opposition on that from those that are responsible with their animals, but you do have hoarding issues throughout the county with this issue. The other big issue is, you guys didn't address septic. So, here we are, we've got all this great dense development, because we're, you know, doing the affordability crisis. Where's the caveat that you still got to meet the septic requirements? Because the septic is going to dictate the density on a lot of these lots. You're either going to miss the nitrogen loading and not be able to develop, or you're not going to be able to meet the setbacks. If you don't have a caveat for septic, you're going to have a firestorm of people complaining that the zoning allows it. Why didn't you tell us about what we needed to do with septic?
Okay. Thank you. And ma'am, your first name is Jenny. What is your last name?
Vitale.
Vitale.
No relation to Dick Vitale.
Okay. I think between the five of us, we'll have a discussion with staff, and I think you've raised some good questions, and we'll see. I'm sure they'll have answers for each, but we'll see, and we'll ferret it out. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Chairman, I was just told that I missed one. In favor, Melanie Bick, Bickham, Bickman?
Baikman.
Baikman?
I think I wasn't clear about what agenda number I was speaking on. So, my name is Melanie Baikman, and while I did send a letter on behalf of my organization yesterday, I do speak as an individual today. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona, and I'm a member of a church that provides heat relief in the extreme heat of recent summers, and I believe that we should care for God's creation and for our neighbors and our future generations. So, that heat relief cooling center comes at a cost and, and, and the commitment from our members. So, as Arizona experiences extreme heat, I think we must embrace clean energy product, projects. Large-scale solar and battery systems contribute to stability to our grid, and in a time of growing electricity demand and rising temperatures, that's critical. Safety is an important consideration and provide, and your proposed ordinance for, your proposed ordinance follows national safety standards and retains a safe setback of 100 feet or not more than 150 feet. So, please approve the thoughtful and rigorous standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Chairman, I have no other speaker forms.
Okay.
Backdating is a crime.
You know what? You're done. Please. Security, help escort her out. That's ridiculous. We have rules of decorum. You're here every single meeting. You know the rules. You're doing this on purpose. Thank you very much. Happy holidays, happy new year. Get out of here now. Tom, go ahead. Go ahead. Tom, presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am presenting the formal update of the Maricopa County's ordinance, sub-date representing the content of the modernization of the ordinance.
Guys, are you all deaf now?
The primary goals of this update are to create a more user-friendly ordinance, incorporate tables, charts, graphics, to clarify the...
Oh, sorry. We also focused, we also focused on streamlining permitting and approval processes, updating core development standards such as heights, parking, and setbacks, and supporting housing availability and attainability, all while ensuring the ordinance remains clear, navigable, and enforceable. Next slide. This timeline reflects the full update process. Over the past year, staff have completed ordinance drafting, internal review, numerous task force meetings, public outreach, multiple public comment periods, and Planning and Zoning Commission review, bringing us to today's board hearing. Before moving into the task force work, a brief note on the handout stuff for today. Handout memo one is with final edits, with clarifications to the draft version number three that was presented to the commission, and handout memo number two are refinements following the December 8th informal meeting discussion that we had. These materials have been shared with the district offices, posted online, and provided to the clerk of the board for inclusion in the official record. These materials support the ordinance update, ensure the board has the most up-to-date information. Slide, next slide. There, we're good. You're good. The board, the board appointed 16, a 16-member task force representing community planning, land development, and housing interests. They identified these six focus areas for this update. From those discussions, the task force developed 85 action items, and 39 of those items are included in the, in this ordinance update. The remaining items will undergo additional review for future amendments, and we appreciate the task force's significant investment in time and, and expertise in coming up with this draft. Next slide. Public outreach was extensive and played an essential role through EROP postings and countywide questionnaires with over 300 responses, two stakeholder workshops, and public review of draft language. Staff collected meaningful feedback on simplifying the ordinance, modernizing standards, and addressing emergency, emerging land uses. This engagement shaped many of the refinements contained in the final draft. Next slide. The first set of changes involves core development standards. Setbacks were modernized, including reducing the rural 43 interior side setbacks to 20 feet and establishing 10-foot front setbacks in several residential districts, or 18-foot, or 18 feet for front-facing garages. Multi-family front setbacks were also standardized to 10 feet. Building heights were updated to reflect contemporary construction practices. 35 feet in rural residential in our two zones, 40 feet in the C1 zoning district, and up to 60 feet in the industrial zoning. And finally, we added screening standards for dumpsters and parking areas in commercial and industrial development, providing clearer and more consistent requirements. Next slide. Parking requirements were modernized. Multi-family now, now requires not only two spaces per dwelling, plus an additional 20% for guest parking. Office and commercial uses require one space per 300 square feet. Standards were also updated to current industry, industry norms for RV and boat storage, mini storage, special event venues, industrial uses, and warehouse uses. Importantly, we have added two tools, shared parking agreements, which allows sites to meet parking requirements collaboratively, and as we discussed in the informal meeting, the, the ability for parking studies to be considered at the time of a plan of development. We made the modification that you have in the second memo for that discussion, that these could be considered in conjunction with plans of development for industrial zones and allow for reductions up to 20% in commercial and multi-family zoning districts. These adjustments make our standards more responsive to a real-world land use pattern. Additional updates include establishing a 100-foot setback for battery energy storage systems. This is something that you heard from individuals who came to speak today. This was a big discussion at the time of the commission, and the commission recommendation to this board was for the 100-foot setback for those battery energy storage systems. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
On that note, you know, a couple folks brought this up. We can always extend that through the, the application, right? If we've got neighbors or a highly densely neighborhood nearby where one of these might go in, we can always expand that if, if need be, right? Mr. Chairman, member Stewart, that is correct. As Mr. Graff explained, upon a rezoning request through the IUPD overlay, as what you saw at the last meeting, where that rezoning is occurring, you have the ability to request those buffers and work those standards through that overlay zoning district. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We standardized measurements for rounding rules for consistency, updating commercial industrial landscaping, specifically one tree, three shubs per 20 feet, and four, and 4% for parking area landscaping. That established a buffer between non-residential and residential uses, allowing small multi-family projects up to four units to proceed directly to permits without a plan of development, updating street classifications using McThot's Transportation System Plan, revising community residence protections to one year with a single 180-day extension, and specifically establishing standards for special event venues, including minimum acreage and provisions for existing SUPs, as we discussed in the informal meeting. Tom, Supervisor Lesko?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ellsworth, can you expand on the community, go back to the last slide, whatever you called it, the community, it's group homes, right?
Yes.
I want to make sure that we're not expanding group homes.
Yeah. Member, our chairman, Mr. Chairman, member Lesko, that is correct. We are not expanding the ability for group homes to go beyond what they currently are existing. What this is, is, is in, it governs the processing of, of those group home applications. We currently have the requirement for separation of 1,200 feet between group homes, or what we term as community residence, in our zoning ordinance. When somebody applies for one of those, they're still within the licensing timeframe for the state. So, what this does is extend that timeframe for when they apply with us to finish that licensing timeframe. Currently, it's at six months. What we found is that hasn't been sufficiently long enough for them to complete that, so we have, we have expanded that within this draft. So, it doesn't increase the ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beyond policy updates, a major achievement of this project is the overall improvement in usability to the code. The ordinance has been reduced from 17 chapters to 14, eliminating, eliminating duplicative sections and removing almost 15,000 words of unnecessary text. We added new graphics and diagrams to simplify interpretation, minimize cross-referencing, and improved the digital version with word searches and quick links. These changes streamline the user experience for residents, staff, and applicants. Chapter 5 consolidates development standards into a, next slide, into a single table, as shown on the screen, creating an easy reference tool for applicants and staff. This table removes the need to search multiple chapters and provides side-by-side clarity for each zoning district. Next slide. Similarly, Chapter 6 consolidates all zoning districts' uses into one comprehensive use table. This includes reorganized land use categories and provides a quick, accurate way to determine where specific uses are permitted, require a SUP, or are prohibited. Next slide. One of the significant things that we needed to do was to come into compliance with state code by the end of the year, as was mentioned by one of the, one of the speakers. That's where the accessory dwelling units come in. For lots under one acre, the ordinance allows one attached ADU and one detached ADU. These units may be independently leased and must adhere to the updated standards, including setbacks, height limits, and yard coverage. This provides flexibility for homeowners while maintaining neighborhood compatibility. For lots one acre or larger, the ordinance allows one attached and one detached ADU with the option for a second detached ADU when de-restricted for, as an affordable unit. All ADUs must meet applicable development standards, ensuring flexibility for homeowners while preserving rural and large lot neighborhood character. Tom, I want to stop you there. Supervisor Lesko?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I want to make sure that the audience and the people listening understand that this is put in the agenda item because of a state law that passed. And can you, do you know the bill number of the state law that is requiring us to add these, what is commonly called casitas, to, to people's lots?
It was HB 2598 last year, and I believe it's also referenced in the state statute. I'm going to go off memory. 1118-dash, 11810-11, is that correct? 01. So, it's in the state statute, and it was passed last year with House Bill 2598.
Thank you. You know, I, I wish I would have been more involved in this legislation when I was going through the legislature. I would have opposed it adamantly, because I just think it's, it's, no matter how small the lot is, you can add these, the state law will now require us to accept people putting in extra detached dwelling units onto their property, one, if it's less than an acre. So, it could be, what's the smallest lot we can have?
So, you have a 6,000-square-foot lot, Mr. Chairman, Madam Lesko.
6,000-square-foot lot. So, these people can have one attached unit that they can rent out, correct?
That's correct.
And then, a detached unit on this very small lot where homes are very close to each other. And, and what's the height that, if it's less than an acre, that this detached dwelling unit could have?
So, Mr. Chairman, member Lesko, that is correct. The lot size plays into that and the development standards. So, every lot has a lot coverage. So, if the house is big enough that there is no lot coverage available, you ultimately wouldn't be able to have the ADU, because there is no lot coverage. The height limitations inside of the building envelope, meaning not within the side those setbacks, would be the minimum height of, of the house itself, which could be up to two stories. When it encroaches into a setback, the state law requires that we allow an encroachment up to five feet to the property line. So, the ADU can actually encroach into a, into a building setback. With that, we have provisions within this draft for a, a lot coverage within the setback of 30%. So, they couldn't cover more than 30% of a side or a rear yard, and there is a height limitation of 18 feet. So, any accessory dwelling unit inside of a setback closer to the property line is limited to one story and 30% of that, that side yard.
And, and Mr. Chair and Mr. Ellsworth, if I remember right, it would allow this 18-foot dwelling unit to be five feet away from the property line, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Lesko, that is correct.
Yeah. I, you know, again, for those listening, I know what's going to happen here. In all the cities and the counties, there's going to be people, when all of these casitas, dwelling units are being built and rented out in short-term rentals, people are going to go ballistic, and they're going to blame us. But we cannot, we can't do anything about it, because the state legislature passed this law, and we have to do it. And I'm going to go on a roadshow and talk to people about what the state law requires, and I'm going to advocate for it to get changed. So, with that, I yield back.
Supervisor Lesko, I want to say I agree with you. I think, just think it's bad policy. At the state level, they give a lot of lip service to addressing housing affordability or economic development. It's unbelievable to me that a bill like this got signed by the governor, much less passed through the legislature. Just a bipartisan sham job here, I think, and as you said accurately before, it's us at the county level that are going to have to account and answer for this, and as we know, this happens in many different lines of business. But at the county, we don't execute policy at the state level. We have to implement what the state tells us to do, but in many times, those angry phone calls are going to come in to staff, into our offices. So, I think for us right now to record our exasperation and our disagreement with this, I think is really important. Any other comments here at this point? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. I view the legislation that was passed and signed into law last year as being a purported solution in search of a problem not yet identified. That is absolutely the wrong place, the wrong level of government, to be micromanaging these types of projects, for lack of a better word, and I have several examples. In my beautiful north-central Phoenix neighborhood, in one case, a lot was 10,050 square feet, and since it was over the 10,000 square feet, they put two huge, enormous structures on a two-story. They, they took advantage, and you will see more and more of this, and Supervisor Lesko, you're absolutely right. We're going to be blamed, so it's really important to get the message out there. We had no say in this, and if I'd been there, I would have joined Supervisor Lesko in killing that bill happily. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Tom? The, the short-term rental section of the, of the updated zoning code, the, are known as STRs. This section clarifies permissible and prohibited actions for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are limited to one per parcel at any given time and may not be used for commercial events or rented by, or, or rented by or to registered sex offenders. When a parcel contains an ADU, the property owner must reside on the site. Additional STRs may be pursued through a special use permit, preserving the neighborhood character while allowing for flexibility. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation. This modernization improves the clarity and usability of ordinance, streamlines development processes, strengthens alignment with state law, and supports the county's broader goals of housing availability, public safety, and regulatory transparency. The update before you incorporates task force guidance, extensive public input, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations. Staff respectfully recommends adoption of TA 25001 as presented. Thank you for your time. Okay. Thank you. First of all, thank you for that presentation. Obviously, thank you for all the work that you've done, but we heard people speak in public comment, and I think it was good to have public comment first, so people can register either their support, questions, or concerns that they have. Can you please walk us through the questions and issues raised by the various speakers at public comment? Any that you need to address or you want or must address, and that's either you or Darren? I might need some help recalling on some of them, but to Ms. Vitale's comments, we, we did include in handout memo number two, you have her email to us with her concerns. There are future phases to this zoning task force items. As I mentioned, there were 89 identified items. Some of those require future analysis and more in-depth and focused public outreach. As we come back through those, we will have the opportunity to look at and, and possibly consider some of those revisions that she recommended. As it related to, some of the comments related to the setbacks regarding the best facilities, there was significant discussion from... There was significant discussion from industry members, from citizens, from the commission itself at the Planning and Zoning Commission. What had been recommended was a five, an additional five-hundred-foot buffer to residential, existing residential units to these besses. At the commission hearing, we heard from not only Arizona Fire and Medical Association, but from Rural Metro, both the chiefs from there, where the concerns were, not the concerns, the recommendation coming forward was that we could follow the national fire protection policies at the one-hundred-foot, and they were comfortable with that. With those recommendations and that discussion, and from the support you heard today, the commission recommended the one-hundred-foot setback that you've, you've heard. In regards to Board, Board Member Stewart's question, you still have the ability during a rezone to institute any buffering that may be able, that may be needed for compatibility with any existing residential. However, what this does do is expand the setback from what is currently a twenty-foot. If you had existing entitlement today to a hundred feet to those besses, which is something that the, the fire industry is, is requesting for that separation, not only for the protection of the surrounding properties, but for the ability to control and contain any instance that happens on the property. Those are the ones that I can remember. Oh, there was a question about animals, the number of animals. We did not touch the animal code within the zoning ordinance itself during this update. What was, the concern that was listed is a current code condition, but was not addressed during this. It is something that we could consider during future phases of, of the zoning code update and be, be able to bring that as its own, own amendment in the future, if needed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm going to make one, okay, actually, go ahead. Yes, Supervisor Lesko.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I think one of the items that was brought up was septic. Can you explain that a little bit more?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, Member Lesko, thank you for that. Septic is actually permitted through our Environmental Services Department, and they have their, their own regulatory authority and regulations that govern septic. So when somebody comes in and applies for a permit for a home that requires septic, you're applying for a permit through the Plan and Development Department and through Environmental Services. And those are reviewed through their, through that department.
Okay, thank you. You know, Supervisor Clint Hickman always used to ask the clerk, how many people are watching? I'm going to do that to him, do that to the clerk, I'm sorry. Because this is a big thing that we're doing today. And in many of these meetings, not a lot of people are watching. But this is going to have a wide, far-ranging impact on Maricopa County, on residents, on commercial, on industrial, on businesses, and any future people that will either be living here or moving here. It's just a phenomenal opportunity here to do something right, and this is a big, huge undertaking. This took us less than a year to do it. Tom, you spelled out the lengthy public process and opportunities that people had to weigh in, and I'm very happy and grateful that people did so. This board appointed a zoning task force. We heard some people today who participated in it, but we're grateful for those folks as well. And also, this is the way it should be done, open, transparent. But also, there were no sacred cows here, so to speak. We looked at the entire zoning ordinance in a holistic way. We represent our individual districts, but we also represent the entire county. And I'm really proud of everyone who worked really hard on this, took this very seriously. But I really hope that people either learn or grow to appreciate the impact that we can do here today if this passes. And I want to go to my colleagues. I've been starting off on the left. I want to start off with Supervisor Stewart, if you have any comments. And then, obviously, we'll see if there's a motion for a vote. But I just want to see any individual, any individual impressions at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is a big deal. I prepared some comments that I want to make sure I cover everything when we go through this. But, you know, the, the, the original zoning ordinance was first adopted in nineteen sixty-nine. And so quite a time has passed since the reformat in two thousand. But this comprehensive overview or re-hall, if you will, is extremely important. And I want to thank staff, along with the businesses and the community, that had input on this, right? Because this is a community event, if you will, to, to put forth something that provides greater usability, readability, and frankly, is just pragmatic. So the draft before us is the culmination of tireless hours. And the fact that you turned this around in a year, right, is pretty remarkable. This is a big deal. And we've, we've removed, what, fifty-five pages of redundancy and streamlined a number of things throughout this to make it easier for our customers to do business with us. I've told, been told numerous times by developers and zoning attorneys, et cetera, just tell us what the guardrails are, right? We'll make that work. We'll fit within this. We just need to know what the rules are, and we'll make it work. So this will definitely help with that. You know, planning and zoning are critical elements of economic development with the chairman's implementation of a Economic Development Director for what I, what he referred to as the hub, for, which is an incredible opportunity to create jobs for, not only today, but for the future. Believe it or not, this will help, right? This will help streamline that process and move things forward. But I think the update positions Maricopa County as a national leader, right? This is very important for growth, job creation, but also creating economic vitality for our neighbors. And it's one of the reasons that I think we will continue to create jobs, growth here. So at the end of the day, you know, we're here to help people achieve their dreams, right? That American dream. And, and I know this is a zoning ordinance, but things like this make a big difference in being a well-run organization. So I want to thank you, Chairman, for bringing this forward. I want to thank my colleagues for the incredible questions that they asked during this process, and more importantly, the folks that, that had input on this. So with that, I will be voting yes for this motion when we do make a motion. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, any questions or comments?
Comments, please. I, I'm very impressed by the transparency and the level of public input that you solicited. I spoke in terms of the highlights of the last year about county government efficiency and the lean management levels. That was absolutely on display here. Looking at you, Mr. Ellsworth and Mr. Gerard, I'm sure you're happy to see twenty-twenty-five in your rearview mirror. But you, you did a yeoman's job. Your entire department, your entire staff. What I most appreciated was your accessibility for questions. And thank you, Madam County Manager, because they are your department. You exemplified the words "problem solvers", which is, I think, how you like to describe the county. In particular, I would also like to give a shout-out to Kevin Curley, who was my appointee on the task force. He is a young, up-and-coming leader, and I want to keep him in the loop going forward because he's exactly what we're looking for. I always tell our, our younger generation, you need to understand this stuff because you're going to inherit this mess. And, and he is a magnificent leader, and I wanted to thank him so much for his service. I reached out to him over the weekend, and he said, what are your thoughts? He provided me with several pages of thoughts. And so I, I just, I'm so impressed with this, and thank you for getting this done.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Supervisor Lesko?
How many, how many words did you streamline out of this regulation?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Lesko, or Member Lesko, at our last estimate, it was up almost fifteen thousand.
All right, well, this is good. So I've always been one for streamlining, streamlining and making it easier for constituents to work with governments. So kudos to the chairman, who, I know this was a priority of yours. And so kudos to you and kudos to the staff.
Thank you. Supervisor Gardo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this quick. I couldn't agree more with everything that's been said. This is just a, a process that has been very inclusive. We had in all the stakeholders and those that operate within Maricopa County. But I think Mr. Stewart hit it right on the head. Everyone I talked to as well, they just need to know the rules. What is it that we need to do? And I think by defining it, making it more clear, and making it more streamlined, I think it's exactly what many of our, our customers or clients that, that come here to Maricopa County to, to do exactly that, help us grow, grow safely, grow smartly. And this is a tool that I, I believe is going to be well-accepted throughout Maricopa County as many of new businesses come in wanting to do stuff. It just helps so much. So thank you for all the work. It truly has been a very transparent system, process, and, and everyone has been able to have their say at the table. And you couldn't ask for a, a better process. You really can't. And something that is so difficult, I mean, it's very complex. Even, you know, I've been, I've been in government for a long time. And, and this is, this is the one area that even at times, I call you all, you know, on a regular basis. How does this work? And, and how do we navigate this? And by making it more clear, I think it's just a big added plus. So thank you for all the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion for this? And then I'm going to explain my vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that item sixteen be approved in accordance with the commission recommendation, further modified by M C Z O draft number three, and also further modified as noted in today's two handout memorandums. I'm so happy to see a more streamlined, user-friendly document with quality graphics and charts, replacing unnecessary verbiage. I wish I'd had this on the planning and zoning commission. I would have learned more. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. I'm going to actually go to the county manager right now. You've risen up through the ranks through planning and zoning. So you know this just as well as Mr. Ellsworth and Mr. Gerard, and of course, our Assistant County Manager, Darcy Coburn, as well. Can you please talk about the significance of what you see here through your decades of experience at the county and what we're about to do?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, as you mentioned, I was previously the Planning and Development Director. And this ordinance was originally adapted many, many years before I was born. And, but it was, when I was Planning and Development Director, it was difficult to use. For example, if you wanted to figure out what was able to go into a commercial zone, you had to go back and look through dozens and dozens of pages to figure out, okay, this is in commercial, but then R five can also be in commercial. And it was, it was difficult for me as a staffer. I relied a lot on Darren and his team because they'd been there for years before me. And I couldn't imagine what it was like to have, to be in the community and try to figure out, what can I do on my property? And that's, that's not, that's not customer service, and that's not how the county wants to operate. And now, just the other day, I was using one of the new charts. And I thought, this is, this is amazing, to take dozens of pages and put them into one easy-to-use chart where you don't have to be a land use attorney to understand what you can put on your property is a game changer. So thank you again, Chairman, for bringing this forward. Thank you to the board for putting people on the task force to work through this. Of course, thanks to, to Tom and Darren, and also Rachel behind the scenes doing a lot of work, and Adam Cannon, also a planner. But I also want to mention, to update an entire zoning ordinance in less than a year is unheard of. Unheard of. You know, any city, any county, I don't think anyone has done that. So that, especially going through even just the public hearing process, takes months, planning and zoning. So this is just, this is tremendous. And this is, as Darren said, the most exciting thing that he has witnessed in his twenty-five-plus-year career here. And I, I would echo that. So thank you.
Great, good. Madam Clerk, how many people are watching?
Chairman, we have approximately eighty people viewing via our two live streams, webinar, and YouTube.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. The point is, right, it's not about how many people are watching, but how many people are impacted. And I am going to vote yes on this. And I just want to go over the reasons why. And as Tom and Darren and the team have pointed out, we've had substantial workshops throughout this entire year. We've had public outreach. And this entire process was to streamline, to make sure that people do not find difficulty when they encounter Maricopa County. A lot of people can afford to pay for a zoning attorney, but usually, those are businesses or people that are well-off. And the people I've always been concerned about are the residents that have to take on undertakings by themselves. Frankly, they don't have enough time because they have families, they have jobs, they have other obligations on weekends. And also, they don't have resources because it's very expensive either to hire a consultant or an attorney. So any single time we can make life easier for our constituents or for small businesses, I think that's really important. But look at all the issues that we addressed here today. Setbacks, building heights, parking. We've done so by eliminating three chapters. We've eliminated fifty thousand words. We've eliminated fifty pages, but we now have implemented new graphics. And we have consolidation of zoning districts, and we have moved districts into a single table. But the other thing is that we're being proactive on new technology. We're hearing every single day in the news about these new technologies. They're going to change the way we live, and frankly, are going to affect the way that our children are going to grow up and how they're going to work. Every single day, we hear about battery energy storage. We hear about A I. We hear about data centers. And it would be shame on Maricopa County if we fall behind and we don't address these things in a proactive basis. Because all of these land use issues butt up against a whole different wide variety of issues in terms of what is reasonable, what is appropriate, and how much do we do? Because too much of a good thing is not a good thing. And we always have to be mindful of the impact of how it affects people already living here and already working here, and how it impacts the quality of life. And I think this entire board cares about all of those issues. We also heard a lot of accolades being thrown around this room where people are giving each other credit. That's just a testament to the team spirit that we have here. No one is patting themselves on the back. No one is claiming credit for everything. Maricopa County, what we do well is work as a team, and this is an entire team effort. And we heard a lot of names that were uttered today, and all of those people deserve credit. But there's also unnamed people who deserve credit as well. But I want them to know that the board appreciates how much work they are doing. And also, as Supervisor Stewart said earlier, we always want to be a national leader. A national leader in policy, a national leader in enacting ordinances, and first of all, a national leader in economic development. We are the best place to live, work, and play, and we have to exemplify that. And we're doing that. So that's why I'm going to vote yes. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Broke Hall, chairman?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Brophy McGee?
Aye.
Supervisor Lesko?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Galvin?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Tom. Thank you to your team. Okay, moving on. Yeah. Okay, number seventeen, M C Z O accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals. Madam Clerk, any speakers involved for item seventeen? Was that combined? Okay, that was in separate. Sorry. Statutory hearings, clerk of the board, eighteen through twenty. Eighteen liquor license applications, owner transfer for Lucy Sage and San L L C. Eighteen B, new license for Bellagio Smoke and Vape. Nineteen petitions hearing for the formation of the Palatial Gardens Irrigation Water Delivery District. And twenty, de-annexation from the City of Avondale to Maricopa County. Madam Clerk, any speakers for items eighteen through twenty?
None on these items, Chairman.
Okay, the board will now consider items eighteen through twenty. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items eighteen through twenty as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Stewart, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Yes?
Chairman, point of order, I wanted to double-check with the clerk on agenda item seventeen. I know that it was encompassed in the prior agenda item. Does that need to be noted for the record? As I reflect, a motion is needed.
Yes, we, we should reflect that in the motion because I believe the original motion was on item sixteen, and I'm sorry, was not aware of it's combined.
That's what I thought. Okay. So let's do one for seventeen.
I just want to be sure for the record. So I move that item seventeen be withdrawn due to the adoption of the M C Z O update in item number sixteen, including the same ordinance requirements for A D Us and short-term rentals. This is no longer necessary.
Okay. Does that work, Brooke? Okay, thank you. Okay. So we don't have to vote on it?
Need a second?
Or do we, we vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, we have a second from Supervisor Lesko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you all for that. Under statutory hearings, under transportation, item twenty-one A through D, road files as listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker forms received in items twenty-one A through D?
And I'm sorry, Chairman, did I miss the motion, items eighteen through twenty?
Yeah, we voted and passed that.
Okay, all right.
No worries. Thank you. You had a lot flying at you, I know.
Chairman, I do not have any speaker forms on this item.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider these items. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items twenty-one A through D road files as listed on the agenda with thanks to Jesse Gutierrez.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gardo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Under Parks and Recreation, item number twenty-two, proposed revisions of Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Department user fee schedule. Ms. Blanc, are you going to do a presentation? Yes, please, come forward. Madam Clerk, any speaker forms for item number twenty-two? Madam Clerk, any speaker forms for Item Number 22?
Chairman, no speaker forms received on this item.
Okay, then we'll go straight to the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Blanca Caballero. I'm an Assistant County Manager, and I'll have Director Waller introduce herself. Jennifer Waller, Parks Department. Jennifer Waller, Parks Director.
Hi, Jennifer. Okay, please go forward.
Chairman, members of the board, before I begin, I would like to acknowledge that there are several members of the Parks Commission here with us today. Mega Budruck, Shelby Sharbach, who is online, Eric Mears, and Isabel Chavez. And I would also like to recognize Jack Stapley, Samantha Stelp, and John Crane, who couldn't be here with us today, but were an important part of this process. So, today, I will walk through the Parks and Recreation Department's proposed fee adjustments and the financial conditions that drive this request. It's ultimately about keeping our parks safe, well-maintained, and accessible without compromising future stability. Parks operates primarily on user fees, which support our maintenance and day-to-day operations. Our largest revenue sources break down as follows, and you can see on this slide. Entry fees at 28%, camping at 25%, concessionaires at 20%, and annual passes at 14%. And it's important to clarify the nature of the concessionaire revenue. These are independently-run businesses operating inside our parks. We do not manage those operations. We only manage the contracts. So, Parks recently hired a third-party consultant to conduct an analysis of revenues and expenses, and they produced a service cost update and confirmed that the department is currently under-recovering. The fees are no longer covering the cost of operations. And the core issue is inflation and market conditions that have pushed up our expenses. For example, utilities are up 16%, repairs and maintenance are up 79%, general services are up 51%, and equipment service fees are up 19%. So, to bridge this gap, the department has been using its reserve fund that's intended for emergencies and large-scale maintenance rather than operating costs. The reserve balance has steadily decreased in the last couple of years due to critical repairs, including the installation of a new HVAC system, the repair of significant leaks, managing a water main break, increased capital project costs, and repairing a drinking water well pump and storage tank. The last fee increase for Parks was in 2018, and even then, only a portion of those fees were adjusted. So, we're proposing a phased approach this time, starting in January 1st of 2026, 2027, 2028, and then after that, reviewing our fees annually. On this slide, you'll see a small sample of the proposed fee adjustments, and these examples highlight the category that makes, the categories that make up the largest source of our revenue. Vehicle entry fees, developed camping, annual passes, as well as a proposed increase to the senior discount, and I'll discuss that discount in greater detail later in the presentation. And even with these proposed increases, our fees remain comparable to the Arizona State Parks System. So, for example, our annual pass is going to rise from $85 to $160 by 2028 if approved, or $120 for seniors with a discount. And the state Parks annual pass is currently at $200.
So, Blanca, the senior discount we see here is from the annual pass?
On the annual pass, correct.
Okay. Are the percentages basically the same as the fee increases and the discount increases?
Correct. It's currently 23.5, and it will rise to 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Where are my guiding principles? So, throughout this process, we emphasized affordability and access. The proposed fee adjustments are designed to maintain service quality, stabilize the reserve fund, close the revenue gap caused by rising costs, and support necessary infrastructure If our fees are not adjusted, visitors will begin to feel the impact. Reduced hours, fewer staff, and limited services become unavoidable. Over time, amenities can decline, and deferred repairs will accumulate. And when infrastructure issues are left unaddressed for too long, they don't become less expensive. Oftentimes, they become urgent and even more costly. Okay, so, we surveyed park visitors between October 1st and October 31st of this year on the proposed fees, and we received 245 responses. The feedback was mixed. Most concerns focused on the size and the pace of the proposed increases, and a small but important set of comments indicated the support for the need to reinvest in maintenance. So, some other key themes that emerged is people want clear justification for fee changes. Many worry about the value of the annual pass. Some fear reduced access for families and seniors, and others raised concern about camping fee comparisons, and many highlighted the timing given the broader cost of living increases. It's worth noting that some respondents may not have been aware of how our annual pass currently works. So, currently, the pass is person-specific. It can only be used by the individual who is named on that pass, and it can be shared or used interchangeably by another person. That limitation certainly affects the perception of value. So, the new annual pass years address that issue. Under the proposed structure, passes may be held by one to four people, depending on the tier that a person selects. And any named holder can use the pass independently. They don't have to be there together for entry. So, this added flexibility reflects feedback that we've received from families and frequent users. But most importantly, all of our annual passes currently, and the new ones that are proposed, allow a pass holder to enter the park with their passengers. There is no cap on the number of people who come in, just how many fit in the vehicle. We also received broad comments on vulnerable groups, spending transparency, desired amenities, conservation priorities, and volunteer opportunities. So, in response to what we heard from the people who took the survey, we do recommend increasing the senior discount on the annual passes from the current rate of $20, up to $30 in fiscal year 26, $35 in fiscal year 27, and $40 in fiscal year 28. So, as the cost of the annual pass rises, the discount will increase. So, this will provide, as I mentioned earlier, Chairman, a 25% discount to seniors by 2028. So, today, we're requesting approval of the proposed fee schedule to close that revenue gap and stabilize the reserve fund. I would like to thank park staff for their extensive work on this project and the financial analysis behind it, and to also thank the Parks Commissioners for their guidance, their time, and commitment to ensuring that this proposal was thoughtful and balanced. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? I'm going to wait for Supervisor Lesko to take her seat. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Do we have a motion for this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
With thanks and appreciation for the feedback and the continuous input while this issue was going through the Parks Board, I am pleased to move to adopt the proposed changes to the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Department user fee schedule, including the proposed changes to increase the senior discount from its current rate of $20 to $30 in 2026, $35 in 2027, and $40 in 2028. I make this motion with thanks and appreciation to my D3 appointee, Eric Mears, who is here and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman, with a quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you to the Commissioners that are back here. They do the good work on behalf of the board in ensuring that our park system is up and running and doing good stuff. Thank you to our hard-working men and women at our park system that work every day to ensure that it's open and available to the public. I'm a parks guy. I'm a park. I probably spend the majority of my time on a park, at a field, than I do even in my own living room. There's no comparison. I was there last night, again, until almost 9:00 at another park, even though it's a city park, it's a park. It shows you the importance of these parks. They really are. They are a key commodity to just a great community. I mean, it's just, they're just so important. I'm going to just say this, Mr. Chairman, I really do think that as, and then I wish I had a crystal ball again to know how to do this. I really do think, as a county, we should be doing a little bit more in terms of parks. I really do. I'm a strong believer in parks. One of the first things I, when I got on this board 10 years ago, I brought up the park system, and I'm just going to say this, one of my colleagues told me, Steve, the parks, that's a city issue. It's not a county issue. City issue. Couldn't be more wrong. Couldn't be more wrong. It's not. I think the park system should work in collaborations with all our municipalities. How do we partner up? How do we work together? What we did a few years ago with Avondale and the Flood Control District in creating that area, beautiful, and we have other examples throughout Maricopa County. There is so much we can do in terms of collaborating. Let it be flood control, let it be the county. How do we work together to create these spaces that are so needed? It really is. And you have families, you have kids, you have organizations that want to utilize our parks. They do. And to show an example was when COVID hit, and we had to make that tough decision, not only us, but the municipality, to do what? Close our parks. We had to make that decision for a short period of time. We had to stop a lot of the activities, the barbecues, the family gatherings, the sports activities. That had to stop because of COVID. And what do we, we got all the phone calls and people upset with us. And I get it. I understand it, the importance of it. But that was a special circumstances. It was a healthcare issue. But I think it shows you how much people rely on these park spaces. So, I appreciate everything you all do, the Commissioners. I think the parks are so important, and I would love, sometime in the near future, to be able, as a board, to be able to say, what else can we do? Take a step back. What can we do as a county? I don't believe it's a municipality thing, as I was told 10 years ago. It's a city issue, Steve. No, it's not. It's a county issue. It's a people issue. It's a taxpayer issue. They want parks. Survey the people. Survey. Do a poll. Our constituency and all five of our districts will say the exact same thing. They want parks. They want the open spaces. They do. So, how, as a government, can we work, not only just to take it on ourselves, but work with all our different municipalities, all the other communities, and say, how do we work together? How do we create these open spaces and even provide even more? And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I get off of my soapbox once again and say, thank you for everything you do. Thank you to Commissioners. I know, you know, it's tough to have to raise the fees. You don't want to, but I understand the need. I really do. I understand what is needed, and I hear it from my Commissioner, thank you, Isabel, who has served on my representing District 5 for a long time on the Parks Board, but I understand it. And I think, at the end of the day, we're going to see just a stronger park system by implementing these fees increase. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We all got our soapboxes.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we had a motion and a second, correct? Okay, first of all, Blanca, thank you so much for spending so much time. Jennifer, thank you so much, especially running one of our pride, right, points of pride here in Maricopa County is our beautiful park system. And Andy Kinesik, I know a previous Supervisor did so much work for the park system. That's a legacy that always must be noted. But Blanca, you have been working with a great team that have put a lot of care and thought into this, because it's not easy. Any single time, we have to involve either raising fees or adjusting fees, especially during these economic times. But at the same time, we need to make sure that our parks are well taken care of and maintained really well. A lot of people from around the country, around the world, take a look at these parks, visit our parks, and it's a reflection of how much we care about our open space if we take good care of it. But we also want people to enjoy it as we beautify it. So, thank you so much. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda, Items 23 through 115, under the Consent Agenda Items as listed on the agenda. Supervisors, do you wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Item Number 44, please.
I'm sorry, 44?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other items? Supervisor Stewart?
Just want to make a couple of comments about 26 through 31.
Duly noted. We'll do that after, before we get to 44. Any other? Okay, thank you. The board will now consider Items 23 through 115, except for Item Number 44. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Items 23 through 43 and 45 through 115 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay, Supervisor Stewart, you have comments on these items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item Number 26, we are proud to reappoint Cheryl Corey and John Wooton to the Maricopa County Extension Board. Cheryl and John's work support our vital agricultural business here in Maricopa County, and we're grateful they are willing to continue to serve. Shelby Sharbach is also being reappointed, and we're also impressed with her knowledge and dedication. She brings her role to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, who also helped with the last item that we just approved. And then Jeremy Sterwicki is a leader in our banking community and the Industrial Development Authority, and is a key component of our local economy. I'm proud to reappoint Jeremy to a board that works so hard to bring new businesses and jobs to the Valley. And then Stacy Lynch is a new addition to our Advisory Audit Committee. She currently serves in senior leadership role with the Phoenix Audit Team and advises auditors across the county. We couldn't have found a more qualified applicant for Maricopa County, and we are very lucky to have you in such a crucial position. And Nueisha Hines, a newcomer to the Board of Health, she serves as the Chief Nursing Officer at Mercy Gilbert, so she's got quite the qualifications, and she has responsibility over nursing, operations, finance, and she is a rising star in her field, and we're delighted to have her on the team. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And thank you to all those folks for their service.
And Chairman?
Yeah, Supervisor Gerard.
Thank you. Real quickly, so I don't look like a Grinch and unappreciative, we are appointing, reappointing Jose Martinez to the Maricopa County Housing Authority. I've known him for a long time, does great work in our community, and I really do appreciate his work on the Housing Authority Board. He brought up the cost of whatever, the little homes, and couldn't agree more. That's not the solution to our housing crisis. It's not. It was an idea, it's one of those feel-good ideas you hear at the legislature all the time, that really don't really directly help when it comes to the housing shortage. If the legislature really wanted to take it serious, they would do more. But nonetheless, once again, Mr. Chairman, get off my soapbox and just say, thank you, Jose, for your continued service on this important board.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, comment on Agenda Item 25? And Mr. Chairman, comment on Agenda Item 25?
Madam Vice Chair.
Thanks to John Augustine, dear friend, dear man, for agreeing to continue service on the Maricopa Cooperative Extension Board on behalf of District Three.
That's great. Okay. Thank you all. Madam Vice Chair, you asked for number 44 to be included in the regular agenda. Do you want to hear a presentation from staff, or do you have a question, or do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I will start with the motion to approve Agenda Item 44 as presented, but I do have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
And my comment is related to approval, and my approval, without actual information on what the fiscal impact is going to be to the county bottom line. I did reach out and wanted to thank the Treasurer's Office for the estimated, and Mike McGee of our Budget Office, for the estimated impact to the county bottom line of $400,000. I am truly hoping we can come up with a process between the Treasurer and the Assessor where we can identify a dollar amount so that we, as board members, know what is being impacted and by how much. And that, I'm happy for comments, Madam County Manager or anybody, but that's, I have expressed this concern to my colleagues before, and I will continue to express it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Supervisor Lesko, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for that. Okay, moving on to Item 116, Appointing a Justice of the Peace for the North Valley Justice Court. Madam Clerk, any speakers for this item?
Chairman, none on this item.
Okay. The Board will now consider item 116, and which supervisor would like to discuss this matter? Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of appointing the replacement Justice of the Peace. And I make a motion to appoint Judge Desiree Tucker as Justice of the Peace for North Valley Justice Court. Desiree is well qualified. She's an Arizona native who grew up in the Deer Valley area of District Four. She's a U.S. Coast Guard veteran who later went on to receive her law degree. She has been legal counsel for several District Four cities and served as Deputy Maricopa County Attorney. She brings a wealth of valuable experience, including the tenure as Judge Protam for Maricopa County Superior Court and Maricopa County Justice Courts. She will be a fantastic addition to the Justice Court, and her longtime commitment to serving the residents of Maricopa County make her a logical choice for the position. Her commitment to service, respect for the law, and impartiality are huge assets. I would be thrilled to see her appointment to the North Valley Justice Court. And of course, I also give huge appreciation to Gerald Williams, who is, was, I have known him for many, many years, and he has served as a Justice of the Peace in this position for many years and has done a fantastic job. And I wish him the best for his future endeavors.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second with the comment. Thanks again to Supervisor Lesko for her due diligence, and I would be honored to second her motion.
Okay, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Judge Williams and now Judge Tucker. Thank you, Supervisor Lesko. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Flood Control District, Item 121, Maricopa County Flood Control-
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yeah?
I'm sorry. I think you skipped 117.
Oh, did I? I apologize. Okay. I know what I was doing. I was, okay. So we will, okay. We will recess as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors with my apologies. Board of Supervisors, addendum, under Human Services, Item 117, receipt of funds from the Arizona Department of Education, under County Attorney, Item 118, Melendrez versus Sheridan, 119, settlement in Maricopa County versus Hildebrandt, and Item 120, competition impracticable procurement for Snell and Wilmer. Madam Clerk, any speaker cards for Items 117 through 120?
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms. One is from Nathan Allen. He wishes to speak on Item Number 117. And the second speaker form, Ruth Lee Goldkorn, wishes to speak on Item 118.
Okay. Mr. Allen, please, and Ms. Goldkorn, please be ready.
My comment is on Item 117, the Flood Control District's Fiscal Year 2027 Budget Guidelines. This Board continues to adopt major budget frameworks inside a structure where public cannot truly participate. The public can join only as a silent webinar viewers. The fourth-largest county in the nation gives remote access, but not to voice.
Which number is he talking about? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
117.
Okay, yeah. I apologize. Go ahead.
And the people who show up in person speak only on two agenda items while almost everything is placed in consent. Flood control is not a small administrative area. It directly impacts safety, property values, disaster prevention. In recent years, we've seen fires, explosions, and environmental hazards, including Whitman lithium battery fires, yet the public has no opportunity to shape policies designed to protect our communities. If the county can adopt guidelines that determine how millions will be spent on our future projects, the residents of those projects affect deserve equal access to participate, whether someone is disabled, elderly, or far from downtown, or working during meeting hours, their right to speak should not depend on their-
Hold on, sir. Our county attorney is speaking. Brooke?
Mr. Chair, I believe the speaker is intending to speak on Item 121, and even though he stated 117, just for the record, it's up to your discretion, Mr. Chair, if you'd like him to continue now or to ask him to speak on 121.
Madam Clerk, what speaker slip did he sign for?
Chairman, Agenda Item Number 117.
Okay. But sir, you're here to talk about the flood control matter?
Simple question should be answered on the record. Why is the public-
Sir, I'm asking you a question. Were you here to talk about the flood control item?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to let you speak since we already brought you up. So just know that when we pull up the item later, it will be duly noted that you spoke. Okay? So please go ahead.
Simple question for the record. Why is the public excluded from meaningful participation, including webinar speaking, when adopting long-term budget priorities in a county this large? And how does the Board justify removing public voice from decisions that impact public safety? Again, the question is, why is the public excluded from meaningful participation, including webinar speaking, when adopting long-term flood control budget priorities?
Okay, sir. Thank you. Appreciate your time, and we'll have it noted that it was for the other item. Okay, Ms. Goldkorn, please come down.
Ms. Goldkorn, who is in a wheelchair.
Okay, and who are you? Who are you?
She's ceding her time to.
I didn't call on you.
I know, but she ceded her time to me.
I didn't call on you.
You don't call anyone. It's her calls. And I was explaining to you why she couldn't be here and ceding her time.
We're not recognizing you.
Okay.
Thank you. And if one more outburst, then you'll have to leave the room. Okay. So where are we at, Madam Vice Chair?
We are asking for public participation. I think that was it.
Okay.
Chairman, Vice Chair, that is correct. No other speaker forms.
Okay. Are there any supervisors who want to directly address one of these four items?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Stewart, and then Supervisor Lesko.
I'd like to make a comment about 118.
Go ahead.
You know, 118 is a settlement with the ACLU for some requirements by the judge from, you know, over a decade ago, to the tune of $165,000, backdated for a mandate that has been completed 100% in the original decree from the courts by the Sheriff's Department. I just want people to be aware of that.
Thank you. Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to speak on 118. For those that are listening, this is kind of, I don't want to vote for this, but it's court-ordered. It's court-ordered that we pay for the malenderous lawsuit for all of the attorneys and their fees, and this is $165,000, which I don't want to pay. I don't think, I think this malenderous lawsuit has gone on way, way too long. We are now on the fourth sheriff of different political parties. And this is, for those of you that don't know what the malenderous case is, it is federal, it's bureaucratic federal monitoring of our Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's Officers. And even though they're in compliance, I mean, the original lawsuit was alleged that Sheriff Arpaio was racially profiling Latino drivers. The court sided with that and then installed this monitor years ago. So we're paying millions of dollars, now to the tune of $353 million, that we're paying for this, and it's just never ending, even though it's been recorded that there is no racial profiling going on, and it hasn't gone on for the last few years. And so I again call on the judge to end this. And let's focus on public safety and spending the money on public safety. And so even though it's a court order, I have to follow the law, so I have to vote for this, but I really don't want to.
Thank you, Supervisor Lesko. Any other supervisor comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
I could not agree more. I promised my constituents when I was running that I would pull this item and vote no every single time. Imagine finding out that, in essence, I have to vote yes. But I disagree. We are paying, we paid the monitor $30 million that could have gone a whole lot of other places that would actually benefit public safety, and particularly those communities that are marginalized. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I believe we need a motion on these items?
That's correct.
Chairman, I move Items 117, 118, 119, 120 for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Grado. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Item 121, Maricopa County Flood Control District Fiscal Year 2027 Budget Guidelines and Priorities, Item 122 and 123, amend IGAs with the City of Phoenix. Item 124, declare, sell excess parcel. Item 125, IGA with the City of Scottsdale. 126, sale of declared excess parcel. And Item 127, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. Madam Clerk, we already heard from a speaker, Mr. Nathan Allen, on Item 121. Are there any other speaker cards for Items 121 through 127?
Chairman, yes, I have a total of five speaker forms here.
Okay, thank you. Please call out the first three names.
First speaker, Jamie Martin, on Item Number 121, followed by Roger Pickrell on Item Number 122, and Mary Ziola on Item 123.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martin.
Go ahead. Hi, my name is Jamie Martin. I'll be speaking on Item 121. When the Board approves budget priorities for flood control, you're not just approving numbers, you're determining how this county prepares for emergencies, mitigates risks, and prevents future disasters. As you're deciding all of that in a structure where the public has no real voice, communities like Whitman Surprise, Buckeye, and unincorporated rural areas face serious safety threats, including flooding, drainage failures, and even secondary hazards worsened by lithium battery fires. Yet the public, the same people living with those risks, cannot speak via webinar, even though you allow yourselves that privilege. When you adopt budget priorities into this restricted system, the county increases its own liability exposure. And if a community raises concerns and the Board knowingly denies accessible participation, future lawsuits become more costly because the county ignores the warning signs. Budget guidelines should not be approved without accountability, transparency, and equal access. My question is, what safeguards are built into these fiscal year 2027 flood control budget priorities to ensure the Board is not approving guidelines that ignore public safety risks the community has already attempted to raise? Additionally, a corrective action plan structure already exists for this to be the solution to these systemic participation and oversight failures, and I will continue urging this Board to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look at the County Manager. Any general thoughts to help her with her question regarding the flood control budget guidelines?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to point out that this is not the budget for the Flood Control Department, where the budget for the Flood Control Department would identify projects to mitigate flooding throughout the county. This is the guidelines that the Board is providing to the, to me and to also the budget team, as to how the Flood Control District should build their budget. And the main focus of this is that they must have a structurally balanced budget that makes the most efficient use of taxpayer dollars as possible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read off the next three names, please.
Next up, Roger Pickrell in opposition on Item 122, Mary Ziola on Item 123, Michelle Scavara speaking on Item 124.
Good morning, Merry Christmas, Chairman and Supervisors. I had, I was looking at this agenda thing, and I, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up. The Item 22 concerns an amendment to the IGA for flood mitigation along Twain Street and near Lookout Mountain. There's a lot of projects like this that impact thousands of residents in those areas like that. And when deadlines are pushed out, and these things, it drops off a big question of concern about transparency, about we the people trying to just get some dialogue. You see where I'm going with that? You know, if I, if, that's just an important thing when it comes to money. Before I pull out my wallet and I go to Starbucks or whatever, I want to make sure I got the right price. Okay? So this is just a common sense communication. I'm looking for an opportunity for us to be able to have, if we have to table items, just to be able to have a quick shoehorn butter parquet moment, to be able to establish, you know, a Q and A. That's what I'm kind of looking for, that dialogue opportunity on that. My questions of that, basically, it comes to some of that timeline issue, is what, what caused the delay? Is this project still on budget? We're, you know, and what are the, some of the concerns about engineering and all this stuff? I just want to get back down to the, is this project still on budget? And if not, what is the new projected cost? And I want to thank you for the opportunity that they, first off, that they had a visual opportunity for an individual to come on to the webinar. Veterans and stuff like that that can't get up here, we'd like to be able to know when we can actually use the system to help we the people communicate. Thank you all very much. God bless you, if you can answer the questions.
County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ask Paul Baughman, who's the Director of the Flood Control District, to come up here and answer those questions. And I heard two questions about what caused the delay and if we're still on budget.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the folks watching online.
Good afternoon, Chairman Galvin, members of the Board. My name is Paul Baughman. I'm the Chief Engineer, General Manager for Flood Control. This particular project is a Small Project Assistance Program project with the City of Phoenix. It is managed by the City of Phoenix, funded 75% by Flood Control and 25% by the City of Phoenix, with a cap of $1 million on the flood control portion of this project. The project has run into delays due to consultant drafting of the design, and the construction, therefore, would also be delayed based on that design still needing to be finished up.
Okay, thank you. Just stay there in case there's other questions from other speakers. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Next up, Mary Ziola on Item 123, Michelle Scavara speaking on Item 124, and Jamie Martin speaking on Item 125.
My name is Mary Ziola, and the Chairman and Board members, this is on Agenda Item 123. Agenda Item 123 asks you to extend the Drainage Mitigation Project for Third Avenue and Thomas Road through June 2026. The public recognizes that infrastructure needs evolve, but we also recognize a troubling pattern. Major amendments, extensions, and financial adjustments are repeatedly placed before this Board without proper public oversight. This county is about to approve another multi-year infrastructure amendment while denying the public the ability to participate by webinar, and while restricting comment to just two agenda items, even though over 90% of county business is insulated inside the consent agenda. These restrictions matter. They prevent the public from asking basic questions about cost overruns, contract performance, environmental impact, and accountability. When public participation is blocked, costly mistakes happen, and those mistakes turn into lawsuits paid for by taxpayers. So today, in the interest of transparency and financial responsibility, I ask, has this project experienced cost increases or design changes that the public has not been informed about? What contractual safeguards are in place to ensure taxpayers are not continually asked to absorb delays, amendments, and extensions? Has this project experienced cost increases or design changes and not disclosed to the public? And what safeguards protect taxpayers from repeated extensions or increased costs? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baughman?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Board. Again, this project is also a Small Project Assistance Program project with the City of Phoenix, and it's intended to solve a localized drainage challenge that they've had that's impacted various buildings along Third Avenue, including Dignity Health Hospital. It's a critical facility for this area. And again, the same caps, the 75% paid by the district and the 25% with the City of Phoenix, with the district's contribution being capped here, apply. And again, we had the same challenge with the city's consultant not being able to complete the design on schedule. But again, that then impacts our ability to have this project move forward, and us to reimburse the city for costs that they incur for this project.
Understood. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Understood. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Michelle Scavara speaking on item 124, Jamie Martin speaking on item 125.
Hi, I'm Michelle Scavara. Agenda item number 124 may appear routine, but the public sale of land is never routine. This land is acquired with public dollars for public purposes under the Flood Control District's authority. Once it's sold, the public never gets it back. Because this Board has restricted the public comment on nearly all agenda items, and because this public is barred from speaking via webinar, while you yourselves use webinar freely, the public lacks meaningful involvement in decisions like this. In effects of environmental decisions, budget decisions, and now the land, I'm sorry, land decisions, before you vote to sell this partial, the public deserves clarity. Has the county evaluated this land, whether it serves future flood migration, public access, or environment? Was there a third-party appraisal review separate from the county's process? And why is the public not allowed to speak remotely on this land sales that affects long-term planning? We have watched this Board place the vast majority of county business under one motion of approval, reducing the public's voice in government. Selling public land without community engagement continues this troubling pattern. So once again, the question must be answered before the vote. What evaluation determined that selling this partial serves the public better than retaining it for future environmental or infrastructure needs? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item number 125, Jamie Martin.
Hi, I'm Jamie Martin, and I'm speaking on Agenda item 125. Chairman and members of the Board, Agenda item 125 concerns a major intergovernmental agreement for regional drainage improvements in the Granite Reef watershed, an estimated $15 million project that affects thousands of residents across Scottsdale, the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and surrounding areas. The drainage and flood mitigation projects are not minor administrative actions. They directly involve public safety, environmental risk, taxpayer obligations, long-term land use, and the integrity of our infrastructure. Yet the residents, who will experience the greatest impact, cannot participate meaningfully in these discussions. This Board continues to operate with denying people to speak via webinar. This is the fourth-largest county in the U.S., and we are funding multimillion-dollar environmental projects while denying equal participation to the very taxpayers who finance them. If drainage failures happen, if the engineering assumptions are wrong, if environmental impacts expand, lawsuits will occur, and the lawsuits have to be paid by us, the public. The Board's refusal to allow meaningful participation raises questions. Are these projects being approved with full public oversight, or are they being pushed through without accountability? So the question is, what independent verification or public transparency process exists to ensure that these $15 million drainage project actually meets the safety, environmental, and engineering standards? And why is the public not allowed equal access to speak via webinar on decisions of this magnitude? Again, a corrective action plan structure already exists as the solution to these systemic participation and oversight failures, and I will continue urging this Board to adopt it.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Madam Clerk, is that all?
Chairman, no other speakers.
Okay. The Board will now consider these items. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 121 through 127 as shown on the agenda.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Stewart, I think, won that one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors under item 128, Maricopa County Library District Fiscal Year 2027 Budget Guidelines and Priorities. Madam Clerk, any speakers for item 128?
Chairman, I have four speaker forms on item 128.
Okay. Please read the first three names.
First up, Mary Ziola, Roger Mayup, Nancy Wilmington.
You know what? I apologize. Send an email to my office and to the county manager's office, and we'll get back to you on it, okay? Thank you, Ms. Martin. Sorry about that. Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
First up, Mary Ziola, Roger Mayup, and Nancy Wilmington.
My name is Mary Ziola, and I'm speaking on Agenda item 128 about the Library District. Agenda item 128 establishes future budget priorities for the Library District, but priorities depend on values, and the public deserves to know whether those values include protecting minors. Our team has collected video evidence showing that multiple Maricopa County libraries are labeling explicit sexual contact as juvenile or teen, making it accessible to minors without parental awareness. Before approving any long-term funding plan, this Board must clarify, are we financially supporting libraries that are bypassing parents and exposing children to adult-themed material under misleading labels? This ties directly to public trust and to the Board's duty under ARS 11-251 to act responsibly with taxpayer resources. We also ask you to recognize the inequity of denying the public the right to speak via webinar while Board members continue to use it. If parents are excluded from participating, how can they meaningfully influence policies affecting their children? My question is this: Will the 2027 library budget include restrictions, guidelines, or accountability measures to ensure that children are not given access to mislabeled adult sexual contact? Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The budget guidelines are about the development of the budget to ensure that it's structurally balanced. The Library has taken other steps to move any books that are juvenile sexual health out of the children's section and into the adult section.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Roger Mayup, Nancy Wilmington, Leslie Shepherd.
Members of the Board, Agenda item 128 is not just a budget document, it's a statement of what the Library District stands for and who it serves. Right now, the Board denies equal participation to parents who cannot physically attend these meetings. The fourth-largest county in the United States allows the public to watch over the webinar, but do not get to speak over the webinar. Yet this Board uses the webinar for full participation and to vote. Library policy has now crossed into the sphere of parental rights, with explicit sexual books relabeled as juvenile and placed within the reach of minors. Denying parents the ability to speak remotely is not just inconvenient, it is a First Amendment and ADA barrier to engagement on issues affecting their children. You cannot approve future priorities while ignoring the structural exclusion you have created. My question is this: Will the FY 2027 Library District priorities include public access reforms, including webinar participation, so that parents and disabled residents can actually participate in decisions that affect their children? Again, I'll say it more clearly: Will the FY 2027 library budget include public access reforms allowing parents and disabled residents to participate via the webinar?
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, the budget guidelines are specifically related to how the budget is developed and that it has to be structurally balanced. It does not relate to the conduct of this meeting.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Nancy Wilmington. Last speaker, Leslie Shepherd.
Okay, next speaker.
Leslie Shepherd.
I know that you said for the last few speakers that you're talking about, Jen, you said that the budget doesn't include or have anything to do with some of the questions that came up before. So what I'm doing is I'm actually coming up, because it is important, because you are passing a budget. How many smile for the camera there, Thomas Galvin? Since you're looking at your phone rather than paying attention to what I'm doing.
Do you want to talk or not?
I am talking. I'm asking you to pay attention. So the question about the budget that was asking about the labeling of teen and juvenile, you understand that according to this law, they're still minors. I just want to put it on the record that I've put this in front of you. I'm going to be giving your own copy before the public comment, but I just want to make sure that you understand, when you're labeling these books, this budget, I know it's affected by what choices you make. I mean, obviously, the budget is going to be something they use toward. I'm very disappointed that they don't have a library in Hila Ben. I know they're going to fix that, and whatever they need to get that going, I hope, obviously, you support it for Jeremy Reader, but I just want to bring you to your attention. The question has been asked about the budget, and you said it has nothing to do with considering the labeling, because that costs money to relabel these and get them out of the minors' department, because books that are explicit in sex are not allowed to be in the minors' department. Juveniles and teens are still minors. The federal law says that until a child becomes 18, they're still a child. That means they're still a minor. So now can you answer the question: In this budget, will you guys also be taking care of the relabeling of books that are sexually explicit from the minors' labeling section, which makes it very clear they don't belong to children at all, minors? Will they be? Yes or no?
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, this is actually not adopting a budget. The budget, this is just the start of the budget process, and it outlines the guidelines that a budget that's developed must be structurally balanced.
Thank you. Your time is up. Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And County Manager, can you repeat for the audience what the county has done as far as inappropriate books in the minors' section, and also the parental options that the county has implemented this year?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, the juvenile sexual health books have been moved to the adult section in all libraries that had those books, and then we have implemented a parental choice program for parents to opt out books or opt out categories of books for their children, and that is in all libraries. It was expanded from a pilot program in Queen Creek to all of the libraries.
Thank you very much, and as I will repeat again, you guys have heard me before, but for those of you that haven't heard me, I don't want inappropriate sexually explicit books available to children, and so I think the majority of the Board agrees with me, and the county has taken actions to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 128.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you Supervisor Stewart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, that ends the regular agenda portion of our hearing. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the public, I'm sorry, as the Board of Supervisors. We're now going to move on to item 129, which is public comment. As always, we have rules of decorum here. Everyone gets a turn to speak. Everyone has a turn to exercise their First Amendment rights at the podium, which means please be respectful of the people who are speaking, who spent the time to come down here to let the Board of Supervisors know how they feel about their government. As always, Madam Clerk is going to read the first three names, so you will know whether you're next, you're on the deck, or you're in the hole. Madam Clerk, what are the first three names, and how many speaker slips do we have?
Chairman, we have a total of 11 speakers. First three, Diane Barker, Kimberly Fidel, and Mary Ziola.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Galvin, Board of Supervisors. I'm a private citizen, Diane Barker. I'm not a paid lobbyist, and it's the season that you turn on that channel for your fireplace, that nice little warm sound of crackling, but I'm here to tell you that we need to stop the pop, crackle, and bang cars. Now, it's against law in Maricopa County, and the state has a Title 13 ARS, public nuisance. The county has code publishing under nine, and the City of Phoenix has 23 ordinance. Steve, I've spoken with my representative at the city, Anna Hernandez, about this because it's a growing problem. Maricopa County's growing, and what it is, it's aggressive driving. It's illegal that these tuners would change a factory car into bypassing the transmission and going into the exhaust and pop and bang, and it's done 24/7. Now, our decibel rules state that after 11, the decibels have to come down 20 and 30 till it's a public, but it is a safety because it has upset people. We get more and more people walking downtown. We've built some gorgeous apartments. We want to get them leased out, but with this kind of behavior, I've talked to people walking from the convention center that are leasing some of these apartments, and they said that it's enerving. So Steve, I'd like to meet with you and see if we can get a comprehensive thing to stop this before I report it to the sheriff.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next three names.
Kimberly Fidel, Mary Ziola, Nathan Allen.
My name is Mary Ziola, and this is concerning the...
Did you call up that name, Madam Clerk?
I did. Kimberly did not come up to the podium.
Okay, so that's the next one?
Next is Mary, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's redo the clock so she gets her full two minutes. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Mary Ziola, and this is concerning the Dominion voting machines. Scott Lennon Decker officially acquired Dominion Voting System as a sole private owner under Liberty Vote. The precinct committee men in Maricopa County have formed a citizens review board to have questions answered in writing regarding database security and using software with Liberty Vote for Arizona elections. We believe that Liberty Vote will still be using the same software as Dominion, only using another name. The Maricopa County Board of Supervisors must have these questions answered by Liberty Vote before signing a contract with them. Is Liberty Vote simply a renaming of Dominion? What will be different about the software after the acquisition? Is your software based on the software originally designed to secure elections in Venezuela and other countries? With motor voter in Arizona, when a voter signs into a poll book, how does Liberty Vote confirm U.S. citizenship and eligibility to vote? How many Dominion election administrators are being retained by Liberty Vote? Has software been completely rewritten, or has Dominion's software just been absorbed? What assurance do we have no backdoor access exists in Liberty election systems? Does any part of your software have the capability to duplicate handmade oval marks on ballot images? In an interview with Laura Logan, Gary Bernstein, former CIA officer, and Ralph Pezzullo, author of the book called Stolen Elections: The Takedown of Democracies Worldwide, explain how American enemy Venezuela stole our 2020 election. Smartmatic voting machines originated in Venezuela with the help of Cuban dictator Castro in the early 2000s to help Hugo Chavez win the referendum of 2004 with electronic voting. Engineers were given $200 million to develop software for Smartmatic to steal elections. Then the Smartmatic software was sold to Dominion, the same software used in Arizona and swing states to steal elections. The Arizona Board of Supervisors need to stop the use of any voting machine software which is used to steal our elections.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next three names, please.
Nathan Allen, Lori Barone, Jamie Martin.
I would like to quickly read a legal opinion from someone allegedly claiming to be the USAG. That happened to me in 2019. First, let's be clear, the Bruin decision changed the entire legal standard in Arizona's 2004 mental health firearm prohibition framework has no historic analog at the time the Second Amendment was ratified. If the process used to classify you was based on court order treatment without a jury, without due process, and under false statements, then it is not lawful under Bruin. Second, the fact that your case was handled in a juvenile or family services court when you are an adult is a procedural violation on its face. A hearing is not a criminal trial and cannot be used to permanently remove constitutional rights. That alone is grounds to challenge the order. Third, if officers, and they did knowingly lie, ignored threats against you, and allowed a known drug trafficker, by the name of Kelly Tilly, by the way, to walk while you were targeted, that brings U.S. Code Title 18 subsection 242 directly into play, deprivation of rights under Code of Law. That statute exists for this very scenario, when government actors abuse authority to violate constitutional protections. Also, placing you in a Level 4 facility... Also, placing you in a Level 4 facility, Florence Iman complex, for violent felony offenders when the charges were misdemeanors is a gross overreach and can be challenged as both cruel and unusual punishment. So I would politely ask that you guys remedy the situation right away. And I will talk to a judge, and I've already brought this to the attention of the DOJ. And considering Copa Health, also brought it to the attention of the U.S. Attorney's Office, where upon Dr. Newfield saying that he was acting in the interest of the clinic, that alone constitutes medical fraud.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Lori Barone, Jamie Martin, Roger Pickrell.
Is anyone here?
Lori Barone.
Not here. Next name?
Jamie Martin, Roger Pickrell, and then Nancy Wilmann.
Good morning, Board. I'm Jamie Martin, PC LD 13, and for the record, I have filed a special action in Superior Court regarding public records compliance and third-party election vendor contracts, including the runback agreement and specifically PRR, Public Records Request 139. I'm not asking you to address the case. I'm just stating that the same issues driving that filing, restricted public participation, denial of webinar access to the public while the board uses it, and the absence of a real corrective action plan continues here today. These problems are now crediting legal or creating legal and financial risk to the county. My request is please restore full public comment, allow the public to speak via webinar, and adopt a real corrective action plan so the issue stops reoccurring ever again. Speaking of Liberty Vote, why did you do and follow the law for a new contract there, but you didn't follow the law for the contract that's been used to certify not only the 2020 election, but the 2022, the 2024, and you're getting ready to use it again in 2026 with no corrective action plan structure? The structure already exists as a solution to those systemic participation and oversight failures, and I will continue urging this board to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Roger Pickrell, Nancy Wilmann, Leslie Shepard.
Tick tock. It's coming that time again. We're going to have another hand count training session, Steve. I know this is, I'm going to get that stage hook, and I'm going to have two ends. I'll get Tom on the other side of that because we're going to invite you over to the West Side Republican Party office over there. Actually, I got the address there. How about that? 10147 West Grand Avenue, Suite B4, Sun City. And that's going to be between 10 o'clock and 12 o'clock on this Saturday, on the 13th. But that's amazing. You know, that's a busy day. You know, us people that have a little bit of a holiday, that we do a little uniform, you know? But anyway, the fun part about this is I'm going to be also, I've been invited to, and another thing, if you can't go to that, Glendale is having their Christmas parade. And Jerry Weir has invited me to be a part of the Christian Award Committee for judging the floats this year, along with us having sacrificed trailer and truck mine, which I got lucky to have, I couldn't drive it, but I did get a guy that's, his last name is Saint Peter. He is a hand of God. He's going to be driving that truck in the parade. So ladies and gentlemen, I just want to be able to give you a great and blessed holiday wish, but I do want to thank you for taking the time and do the things that you've actually shared to us today. We all agree to disagree, but sometimes we just got to be able to say, okay, there is two sides to the coin. Let's be fair to be able to entertain those two sides respectfully. And I would love to have you come down, and let's see the other side of the coin, and I'll be grateful to be able to let you on the next road. This is all grateful thought. Thank you. God bless you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Nancy Wilmann, Leslie Shepard, Kristen Vale.
Good afternoon, Nancy Wilmann. I'd like to address the Board of Supervisors and their duties as the Library District. Although it has nothing to do with the budget, I would like to talk again about some of the sexually explicit books that still remain here and there around the libraries. Specifically, this book is gay, and it's perfectly normal. These still can be found in some of the libraries. I was here in April of 2024 when I first brought up this topic, and I have been speaking with other people at several Boards of Superv, School District Boards. And it seems that perhaps there's nothing you can do at this point, because then I found out that the libraries are governed by the American Library District. While at the time when I spoke in 2024, the president, her statement was, quote, "She wanted to gay the landscape of America's libraries." And so nothing much has occurred. I just found out there has been a newly elected president, and I would suggest that you monitor her policies, her guidelines, whatever. And if it's not satisfactory, I would urge you to rescind your membership in the American Library Association. Other states have done that so that they conduct their own policies on morality and what's appropriate for the children. So as a grandmother, I ask you to please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Leslie Shepard, Kristen Vale, Roger Mait.
Roger's going to hold this up when I read this. I want you guys to see this book. This is called All Boys Aren't Blue. This, on the spine, it says teen bio. So this is in the teen department. I'm just going to read you a few different excerpts from it. He said, this is on page 266, I'll give you a little, "He reached his hand down and pulled out my dick. He quickly went to give me head. He was definitely experienced. He then came up and asked me if I wanted to try him on. I then, yeah, this is embarrassing to read. I began, and he said, watch your teeth. I didn't want to let him know that I was inexperienced. I didn't want him to know that I was a virgin. His body felt good, warm in my mouth." I'm going to go to page 267. "He put lube on, and I got up on him and his knees, and I began to slide into him from behind." I'm going to read that to you because that's the teen department. That's labeled teen and juvenile. I want to remind you, this is the law of what a minor is. Juvenile, teen, is a minor. So you having a label on these that even say minor, you're going to be responsible because you can actually take that. The reason we were asking you about the labels and finances involved in it is because you're not taking it serious. You're acting like, because you moved it out of the children's department, which thank God you did, the minor, the little minors. But minor, the law, you know, Galvin, you're an attorney, the law says that this is what a minor is, not what the, the one who wants to gay up the environment, I don't care about if somebody's gay. There's laws about this filth. This is in your county libraries. We visited every single library before we came here, just county. Debbie Lesko, you got a lot in your county, and a lot of them are contributing to...
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, Kristen Vale, and last speaker, Roger Mait.
Okay. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Since the 2022 election, the numbers presented by Scott Jarrett in his slide decks have repeatedly failed to add up, except for the July special election. Yet this board has certified every one of these elections. In reviewing the November 2025 election, the only variance shown was 52 ballots that were not counted. Who were those voters and what happened to their ballots? We also relied on just 26.56% of our electorate or less for the sudden Prop 409 tax election. There was no hearing to educate we, the people, and yet Supervisor Lesko stated that the Board of Supervisors have nothing to do with the additional property tax election, even though the board is in charge of our elections. Meanwhile, the 2014 property tax proposition is still being paid by the public. So my question is simple. What criteria does the board use to certify election results on behalf of the people who elected you? We also heard about issues with signature verification, especially when in-person voters may only have one signature on file. If Glendale, Avondale, Apache Junction, Chandler, and whatever the fifth city that Scott referenced are available, perhaps they could serve as pilot locations for one day, one vote in March. It may, it may help ensure all legal votes are counted and reduce reliance on signatures. Regarding the two missing and then found blue boxes, where exactly was the red box located? Were the inspector or troubleshooter at the replacement ballot site interviewed, and why are those notes missing from the form? And finally, when will our duly-elected recorder receive the statutory IT and operational resources he is entitled to?
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Lesko has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam County Manager. Is, does, did this board vote on putting on Prop 409 on the ballot? Which was the Special Healthcare District?
Mr. Chair and Supervisor Lesko, just to clarify, the board can't comment on responses to a public comment here. You might request that County Manager answer that question after the meeting, but also generally...
But we can respond to criticism.
You can respond to criticism.
And if there's an actual underpinning to that response, I think it's okay.
That's, that's correct. So that clarification will be, will be allowed, yes.
Okay. So Supervisor Lesko, go ahead.
I already asked the question. I mean, I didn't vote on it. I can tell you that.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, no.
Thank you. Okay.
And in fact, I was opposed to it. So also, what's my, oh, also, is it your understanding, County Manager, that we are prohibited from law, there's state law that says you have to have early voting, and it has to be automated? That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, that is my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Last speaker, Mr. Roger Mait.
My name is Roger Mait. Every governing body is warned that when you limit public comment, silence dissenting viewpoints, overuse the consent agenda category, and deny ADA access, you dramatically increase the risk of future lawsuits. Today, I'm putting you on notice again. In front of you, you should have your report card. It looks just like this. The data now proves a pattern. In 2024, 0% of the agenda items were off limits to the public comment unless they were pulled. 2025, under this leadership, that number exploded to 60 to 90%. That is not governance. That's obstruction. The courts will ask a simple question. Did the board receive warnings? Yes, they received warnings repeatedly here today and every month leading up to this. Once willfulness is established, the county becomes liable to punitive damages, not just corrective action. And I want the record to reflect clearly, the public did everything properly. We notified you. We documented ADA denials. We recorded inconsistent enforcement of speaker rules. We observed unequal access between board members and the public. Repeatedly, I've told you that I drive an hour and a half each way to come here to speak for a maximum of 360 seconds because you refuse me the webinar equal access to this meeting that you guys enjoy. People in wheelchairs are expected to come here within, and have to come, and it's a block away. I can't believe that there's no access. My question for the record is this. When courts ask, why did this board fail to correct unconstitutional practices despite repeated public warnings? What explanation will you provide? All five of you are equally accountable for these abuses. All five of you. We've told you time and time again, and the Constitution says one day voting.
Thank you, sir. Okay. That concludes our public comment portion. And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in public comment throughout the year because it is vitally important to Maricopa County and to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. We have seen other jurisdictions in the valley where they have completely eliminated public comment. That is something that I don't believe that would happen here. And so, thank you so much for your public comment. And so, it is vitally important for us to hear from folks throughout the year. We appreciate the people we heard from today. We appreciate people we heard from from all 12 months out of the year. And I know all five of us look forward to hearing from any other individuals or these individuals next year as well. So we're going to start with Supervisor comments, starting with Supervisor Stewart and then Supervisor Gardo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank you for a great year. You know, I mentioned this earlier, you know, I've spoke with a handful of people. I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm proud of the mission that you put forward from your first meeting and your speech. And we executed on nearly all of that, if not all of that. But I think, I was talking to a group last night, and we've gotten a lot done, from the Sheriff's Department pay to just infrastructure and just the nuts and bolts of what we're doing. And ultimately, you know, I've always said, I want Maricopa County to be boring, right? And I will commend you on making sure that we were boring this year, and that's a compliment. So thank you for that. You know, we're out and about in the community regularly. I met with Recorder Heap and his team for the signature verification process. I have to tell you, that added layer of security and that bipartisan review of those signatures, that speeding up the signature verification process, I think will help us in our customer service goals as it relates to getting election results quickly. So I commend him and his team for doing that, and I enjoyed that training. Attended the Tempe State of the City. They are rolling in Tempe. They are doing great work with, it relates to housing, economic development, and I want to commend Cory Woods and the council and the staff there for the great work that they're doing in their community. Met with the Arizona Free Enterprise Club, had a chat with Chief Brian Chapman. We talked about the synergies between the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department in Chandler, and what excellent police forces look like. And we were, met with great questions from the community as well. And then attended the Chandler 100, which is the 100 top businesses, both micro and large businesses in Chandler. It felt like a family reunion, right? Economic development's a big piece of what Chandler does, and I really enjoyed that. So I did want to let you know that tonight, I'll be having a virtual town hall where I'll be providing county updates. A lot of those came from what Chairman Galvin had shared earlier in the video today, as well as other things that he put forward, as well as some of the specific things that we're doing in District One, but also answering questions via the chat on things that, questions that people may have. So, and I want to let everybody know, we're going to be adding a new member to the Maricopa County team any minute now, as Andres, my deputy chief, his wife, Cara, is getting ready to have a baby. I think her due date was today. So we're excited for that, yeah. And I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and an incredible 2026 that's coming up. Enjoy spending time with your loved ones. Thank you, Chair.
It's nice to hear that our county population goes up by one this hour. Okay.
District One, I'm assuming is going up in population.
Supervisor Gardo, and then I'll go to Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quickly, just to kind of, not trying to rehash that, but just to make for clarification for the record, no, Maricopa County Board of Supervisors did not call for Prop 409. We are strictly a vendor. It's no different than any other jurisdiction out there, cities or towns that have elections. We conduct as a vendor, but we do not call for the election. That was a misstatement by the public. When it comes to elections, I do appreciate all the great work by all our county employees, particularly the Elections Department, both Recorders and Elections. I come from that world. That's where I started my adult life, is in the world of elections. I know what it takes. I know all the hard work that goes in, the sacrifice that many of these men and women do in our Elections Department. It's just, it's very overwhelming. But I do, I do still have concerns about the number of ballots that have been disqualified. We are doing a kind of a deeper dive in who they are, what we come to find out. Many of... a kind of a deeper dive in who they are. We come to find out, many of the 6,000 were high advocacy voters. These are voters that vote regularly. For whatever reason, their ballots were disenfranchised. Well, we're also coming to find out that many of the voters are retirees, elderly folks, and another half was our younger population, 24 and under. This is the population that was disqualified in the November elections. What I don't want to see as we move forward, particularly in 2026, that if an eligible voter, a U.S. citizen who votes, who's registered, had that castor ballot in accordance with state law, that that ballot should be counted. And, but we'll find out more, Mr. Chairman, as we continue to do that deep dive in the 6,000 ballots that were disqualified in November. I hope that we have more answers. I know we have to work with the Recorder's Office to get a lot of the data, but we'll know more as we move forward. Mr. Chairman, I know at the beginning of the meeting, I did point out the hard work. It was a great video. Whoever conducted the video, our production, great video. It really shows the hard work that the county does throughout the year, and this is every year. And I do want to continue to thank our hard-working county employees. But it is your leadership, Mr. Chairman. It is. It is your leadership. I know you've taken a lot of rocks throughout this whole year. None of them should have been thrown. You have done a great job in leading this county through some challenges as well, but really looking at the future. And I think that has been just a mark on your leadership, to be able to say, hey, how do we make the fourth-largest county just the gold standard, as we used to always say? It's a gold standard, and you have played just a key role. I remember in your chairman's speech, I was sitting right over here, and I've heard a lot of chairman's speech, but after your chairman's speech, I walked away thinking, wow, he's taken on a lot. And you only have one year to do it. And as you know, it went real quick. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership.
And we did it all.
What's that?
And we did it all.
Yeah, and you did it all. That's a good point. You had the perfect example of just strong leadership, and then we just have a great staff here in Maricopa County, not only executive team, but just the hard-working men and women that come to work every day to ensure that the people of Maricopa County are taken care of. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. I'll see you all in 2026.
Thank you. Supervisor Lesko, and then the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the great job that you've done this year. I know this is your last formal meeting of the year, and congratulations to you for your job well done. Also, thank you to the staff for all the work you've done this year. I'm going to go through some of the things that I've done since our last meeting, and I got to meet with the City of Peoria, city council people, and fire, the fire chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief, and discuss some issues that are important to them. I also was able to speak with my constituents in Legislative District 25. I also went to one of the Sun City Early Bird Lion Club meeting and got to speak to some great people from Sun City, and you're going to love the name of the president of this club. He goes by Lion Louis Lion. So, his name is Louis Lion, and because he's a lion, it's like Lion Louis Lion. And that's what they call him all the time, and it gives me a chuckle every time I hear it. When I first started going to this group, and everybody said lion somebody, I was like, gosh, there's a lot of liars in this place. Lion, lion, so-and-so. I went to the Arizona Tax Research Association, their annual meeting, and I love going to those, because they always give us an update of what they project the state budget is going to be like and the revenues that are coming in, because that affects the county as well, because we have shared revenues with the state. I also met with the City of Surprise Councilman, Johnny Melton. He is interested in talking to me about a data center project that is proposed in our district. I hosted the City of Peoria to our Elections Tour of McTech, the Elections Department, and so that was fun. And I went to another Sun City event where we were dedicating a monument marker for the Town of Marionette. The Town of Marionette was a farming community that was there before Sun City. And so, there was this big monument rock with a plaque on it, and they wanted to move it. And I have to thank Jesse Gutierrez and the McDot team for helping them move this. These people were so appreciative. They just kept, you know, telling me how I helped them so much, and I'm like, well, it wasn't me. But thank you to the Maricopa County Department of Transportation for helping them move this important monument. They moved it to the Sun City Museum site so that everybody could see it. And then, last week, last but not least, I had this great, great opportunity to go with the people from Luke Air Force Base and Fighter Country Partnership to Nellis Air Force Base. And you wouldn't believe the great, I saw two B-1 bombers take off on the runway, as well as other planes, and it was exciting. And Nellis Air Force Base, you know, they train fighter pilots, but not just on F-35s like Luke does. They train and have combat. They have these red flag training things. So, there's all different types of planes that were taking off. And I was on the, very near the runway with General Berkland from Luke Air Force Base, and we were watching all these, and those B-1 bombers, you could feel the afterburners. That was quite the experience, and so I thank them for that. I did not fly, now Luke Air Force Base-
I didn't either, so go ahead.
Luke Air Force Base did give me the opportunity to fly an F-16, but if anybody has watched the Netflix show on the Thunderbirds, by the way, the Thunderbirds are stationed at Nellis Air Force Base, so we met with them too. I guess I'm glad, because I'm too old for that. These people were passing out in the training, and I could see myself in the back of the F-16 just passed out for 45 minutes. That probably wouldn't have been good. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Lesko, you're not alone, because I wouldn't do it neither. I'm just, I'm a chicken, so.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair.
Passing out is the second worst option. But that's all I'm going to say. Looking out, I see that a lot of our audience has departed, and we're left with what I used to call, when I was school board president, the usual suspects. So, I'm going to briefly summarize the events in my community, which goes from Anthem, Desert Hills, New River, Phoenix, Cave Creek, Glendale, and Paradise Valley. And my team was out and about in all of those areas, and we had a wonderful, wonderful time. I also wanted to thank Jesse Gutierrez for the invitation to speak to the American Council of Engineering Companies of AZ. I remember so vividly many years back when their lobbyist at the time invited me to go to an engineering firm and listen to how long it takes to develop an infrastructure pipeline, starting with educating the engineers, hiring the engineers, winning the prize. So, I learned a deep appreciation of infrastructure and the importance of infrastructure, no matter how boring it is. So, that was really, really fun. And I could talk to them about why politicians always bolt for the door. You know, are you going to vote on a sewer system? Are you going to vote on a raise for staff? Oh, I'll do that, you know, because they're all there yelling at you. To my colleagues and Maricopa County staff, this is a good time to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's. But I mean that to you personally, to your families, not just in the context of the job you do, the sacrifices you make, but to you and your families. Chairman Galvin, I'm a creature of boards, and you started out the beginning of the year with such unbridled optimism, and you carried it through to the very end, truthfully. I don't know how you did it, because anytime you change one member of a board, it's an epic, epic shift. This was a three-member change, and you did a wonderful job of reaching out. You did a wonderful job of leading. And what I also came to appreciate and respect is the gravitas and the experience that Supervisor Gallardo brought to the table. We all, I believe, benefited from the two of you. I wanted to thank you profoundly for the work that you did, and thank you for putting up with us, Madam County Manager. I'm not sure how you do it, but I certainly appreciate it. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. And County Manager, I forgot to go to you first. So, any thoughts you have on today or for the year?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you again to the entire board. It's been a privilege to work with all of you, and also to the chairman to add on to what the board members were saying. You had an impactful chairmanship. You said it in the beginning with your speech, and you had an impactful chairmanship, and I would be remiss if I also didn't recognize your team for that. And it's been a pleasure to work with Garth and Michelle and Taylor. So, you have a great group in D2, and I just wanted to say again, thank you to the executive leadership team for the county and all of the staff, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you all. For me, it's about one word. Team, team, team. Madam Clerk, I want to thank you for all that you have to do this entire year. There's only a handful that work directly for the board. They include the County Manager and yourself, and you always handle yourself with aplomb, even keel spirit and patience. And I know you have to work very hard with all five offices, but especially the office of the chairman. So, thank you so much. And I also know you have an amazing team that works with you. So, on behalf of the board, we appreciate everything done, everything that the Clerk's office does. And then, obviously, Jennifer, County Manager, your staff, absolutely terrific. We're just so proud to have you as a county manager and to work with you on a daily basis. And I also want to particularly thank the other elected officials here in Maricopa County. We have a unique system in county government where we don't choose certain offices. The voters choose them for us. In many ways, it's an arranged marriage. However, we're able to work well with them most of the time, almost all of the time. And I particularly want to thank two elected officials, and if they're not watching, I hope their colleagues let them know. So, Mr. Liddo, you're here. Please extend our gratitude to Rachel Mitchell, the county attorney. And if anyone from the Sheriff's Office is watching, to Sheriff Jerry Sheridan. Both of them go through incredible daily grind on a daily basis, and they're very committed to public safety and to justice, and also to working with the board on a cooperative basis. And I also want to thank my staff, who were called out earlier, Garth, Michelle, and Taylor. All three of you are so impressive, and I learn from each of you on a daily basis. And you're very patient with me, and any single time I have a crazy idea, or have a crazy request, or needed something to be done yesterday, I never have to worry about the three of you. I know it's going to get done. And I know on a daily basis, you're representing District 2, and you're representing my office so well. I'm proud to work with you and proud to have you as colleagues. Also, I want to thank my constituents, the folks that put me here in District 2, and also all of the other stakeholders, all the other elected officials in District 2. It's an honor to work with these mayors, these city councils, these town councils. We all have large districts. We represent about 950,000 people, but we have to interact with the municipal level and at the state level. And so, working with all of those folks who care just as much about their community and our district means a lot. And then finally, I want to thank my colleagues for electing me chairman of the board this year and for working alongside you. I care a lot about the board, the board itself as an institution, and it was really important for me to welcome three new colleagues. And as the Vice Chair said, if one new person enters, it changes the complexion of a board. Well, we had three. And I really hope, and I knew that Steve and I would do everything we can to welcome our colleagues. And that was important for me, that we establish an orientation program for the new supervisors, which I think worked out really well. And I myself participated in that orientation program. I know Garth did as well. And I think going forward in the future, County Manager, that's orientation program will help any new supervisor who comes long after we are gone. But also, my colleagues elected me chairman, and it was a privilege and an honor to serve as chairman this year. And yes, we're always forward-looking for me. Now, it's looking forward to 2026. We're going to do great things, and I'll have more to say early next month. But thank you for everything. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hopefully, we don't have any emergency meetings between now and then. It's happened before, Steve, right? So, knock on wood, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.